All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good finance seat, we'd like to get started. City Council is adjourning, reconvening from closed session, and we are adjourning closed session at 6:20 PM. And I would like to call the regular city council meeting to order on Wednesday, September the 25th at 6:20 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the retro replays.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, September 27th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, September 29th at 9:00 AM. It's being closed captioned, it'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card which can be found at the back of the room, provided to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Councilmember Detrick?
Here.
Councilmember Soen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
I am here. Next item?
Takes us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ah, Pledge of Allegiance. Ah, who do we pick on? Let's pick on the city manager. You can leave a simple pledge, please.
Please join me in pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the council would like to invite the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. And if you could join us, please. Thank you very much. And next item?
Takes us to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have an agenda, move and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, retention? Right, next item?
Under Section 3, for the closed session, we have no items. That'll take us direct to Item to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, a presentation by the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office on the Youth and Community Connect app.
Hi, Anne Marie.
Good evening.
Hello, welcome.
I think this is the first time I've been here to officially talk to all of you. So, Mayor, members of the council, I'm super honestly excited for you to hear about this really trailblazing app that we have partnered with many folks in the community on called Youth and Community Connect. Assistant Chief Morgan Geyer, who took Natalia Luna's spot, is going to kind of give you a little presentation. Hopefully you don't cut us off on the three minutes. But, you know, one of the things, just to give you a backstory on why we felt this was an important thing to do for our community was, when I came in, now almost five years ago, one of the best things I've learned is how incredibly diverse this community is. You know, we're not just the city of Elk Grove, we're many cities, we're also a county of 1.4 million people. And with that diversity, we have incredible diversity of the nonprofits that exist, not just here in Elk Grove, but across this county. And what I realized and what Natalia realized fairly quickly is, how do we make sure we connect everybody to those incredible nonprofits? Because there was no avenue that we could see. And so, really Natalia gets a lot of credit for this, which is to develop an app where we can connect our youth to all different kinds of things, nonprofits, services, the police department, the resources that we have. Because really, information is a powerful tool. And so, we developed this app, it took well over a year. Our, I would say, our anchor, original partners were Always Knocking, Brother to Brother, and La Familia. And then we have some incredibly great community-based advocates, including Asian Resources, Big Brothers and Sisters, Blue California Boys and Girls Club, Chicks in Crisis, which we all love here, City of Refuge, City of Sacramento, SEDA, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission. And we have well over eighty-five organizations that are now part of this. And so I think once you hear more about it, you're going to realize why this is an awesome app that is really unique to us. And I have no doubt that it will become a model for other communities to make sure that we can connect people by various different ways, fairly easily, to services. Just a few days ago, maybe yesterday, Chief Albright texted me or emailed me to say, "Hey, we're on this app, but we're continuously adding content." And I'm sure he can tell you more about it, but he's got great things in his department that he wants to make sure he shares with your community about opportunities for youth in our community, whether it be toy projects, whether it be VIP programs, things like that, that are awesome avenues for us to connect our youth for services within our county. So I'm going to introduce Assistant Chief Morgan Geyer to kind of go through that, if that's okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to tell you about this fantastic app. There's only eight slides here, and I will do them quickly. But just to give you an idea, this app has eighty-five organizations currently, and we're adding more and more each day. There are over thirty-five different resource categories, so it's a lot, but it's laid out very simply. And we have over two hundred programs that are available on this app. This is sort of what it looks like on its home screen. It is an all-in-one app for all of these different services so that one can connect, and not only connect to apps, but see other apps that they might not have even known that they wanted or needed prior to looking at the app. One of the wonderful parts about our community is we have all of these wonderful resources available, and that can at times be somewhat overwhelming. How do you get from a food bank to a park and rec activity? That can be very intimidating to do if you're just sitting down with a Google search. So it's all here. It is divided into these four relatively simple categories. It's broken down by agency, if you want to search by agency, by resources, and those are the different categories that are listed out. Specific criminal justice programs, of which the DA's office offers quite a bit, both in the classroom and in the community. So if anyone is interested in having a speaker come to their classroom or participate in one of the different criminal justice programs available, they can go directly there. Or if you simply want to look what's available in your zip code. So those four easy ways, it's very easy to put on the phone. It doesn't operate through the platform of either the iPhone or the Android, so there's not a need to pay for it. It's free, it's open to everyone, you simply go to SACyouthconnect.org and put it on your home screen. You can do it from your desktop, it's nice and easy. Each individual agency has the ability to put information on there that can provide the consumer, the customer, to their website, to any information that they want to lay out. All of the nonprofits are registered and have business licenses, and we are constantly adding new agencies every day that participate. It's easy to use under the resource category, you simply click through and look for something that you either need or just want to browse through, and when you click on it, you get all of the information that you need. The criminal justice programs, as I said earlier, this just gives you a little view of what it's like. For example, our gun violence information for teens that we roll out through classrooms throughout the county. The ICEmart program, other agencies' programs. As Anne Marie had mentioned, Elk Grove Police Department is adding, we're excited to get new content from them very quickly and will add significantly to the app. Or you can search by zip code, as I had said before. I have, for one final shameless plug for it, I have a whole stack of cards here. And on the card, it sort of lays out some easy instructions on how to put it on there. It even has a QR code on the back for those that are technologically advanced or those that have children that are probably technologically advanced. Can ask them to how to use that code to put it directly on the phone. We are very excited, and I just want to give a quick success story within one day, actually, the day the app launched, which was on August 20th. We had, within an hour, the God's Angel Shoebox of Love Food Pantry email us, or actually call us, and say they immediately had connected someone who needed some food. And that was done within hours of the app launching. I was at the Student Voices event today where we sat and listened to high school students talk about their observations about the criminal justice system and other things. And of the six kids at the table, two of them already had the app on their phone, and they helped me put the app on the other four students' phone and began looking through it. So everything from park and rec to used clothing to food banks, it's all on there. And we are incredibly proud of it and hope to spread the word some more. So I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come and address you on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item.
That'll take us on to Item 4.2, which is the presentation of artwork from Gregory Kondos and Friends, I believe.
Yeah, come on up.
Wait, where's Lana?
So for the Art Commission that's here, I'm going to pull you up as well, so be prepared to take some photos.
Mayor, council, I'm David Lima, the chairman of the Linda Mayman Lima Foundation. A couple of years ago, we rediscovered a story of Elk Grove, in Elk Grove's history, about Greg Kondos being the art, head of the art department here at Elk Grove High School in the 1950s. And I had the opportunity this evening to pick him up and drive him out here. And for forty-five minutes in heavy traffic, I was laughing so hard about the experiences as an art teacher in the 1950s at Elk Grove High School. I had a tough time keeping on the road. In the process of learning his story, we also discovered, and we well knew this, that his careers and Linda's careers crossed paths at Sacramento City College when Mr. Kondos was at City College. For thirty years, was it? Just about thirty years of teaching there. As you know, he's a world-renowned landscaped artist, highly acclaimed, highly awarded. And he was just sharing with me a little earlier that he had the opportunity to work in the studios of Cezanne for a whole day, and no one gets an opportunity to do that. I'll tell you a story about the King Tut's tomb later, which was another interesting story. But, a number of years ago, he actually produced this piece of art that's here. And if you go to the Sacramento, I think it's the A Terminal, the older terminal in the Sacramento Airport, you will see this piece replicated in glass. This is the only time that this piece has been produced on canvas. And he is, in Linda's name, through our foundation, donating it to the city of Elk Grove to be installed in the new civic center when construction is completed. And he's doing so most graciously, doesn't do this for community. He's, to my knowledge, he's never donated a piece of his art of this stature to any organization. So we're very pleased and privileged to have Mr. Kondos here to donate this piece. And we also, well, I personally want to acknowledge the hard work and the effort of Jason and all of the staff of Elk Grove and working with him, certainly the Arts Commission, to make this moment possible. And certainly with your support, I know our foundation has been very successful because of the support of this council. So thank you all very much. So Gregory, would, I think we've got a wireless point here?
David? David, let me do this before Kara gets upset at me, I'm supposed to read this introduction. Obviously, this is David Lima, Gregory, and Monty Kondos. This piece is from the Linda Mayman Lima Foundation. Gregory Kondos, as mentioned before, is a master of a contemporary landscape art with highly sought-after pieces displayed all over the United States. The Kondos are donating, the River's Edge Number Three Gleekly on canvas piece in memory of Linda Mayman Lima for display at the District 56 Community Center. Thank you for your donation. This will beautify the lobby of our new community center. So please, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I'm deaf, I think. That's what my wife says. That's one system somebody's got to get on, and that is to get the system going where we can all hear somebody talk. I don't hear, I have to be honest. I wish I did. Maybe I can come back with an answer on some questions. But, you know, I'm going to shock you a little bit. I am Gregory Kondos. I am the Gregory Kondos. I'm a damn good artist. Don't get all fussy about it. Because I work for, I work very hard in the art field. You don't get accolades, you know, things that depend on your lapel and things. You just make people happy. I think it should be bottled somehow, so we can buy it and uncork it and listen to it. We need, we need help. When a student becomes a teacher and somebody says to them, "Are you a good teacher?" I think, no. They cover up. Why? If you're a good teacher, you're damn right I'm a good painter and a good teacher. So let's put it together. And that's because we don't have a rule in the art field where we can look back at some book and find the answer. It's there, it's right up here. It's not over on this side, it's on this side. And I've been teaching now a hundred years, almost. Four more years, and I've had it. No, I don't want more. I haven't had it, really. I wake up sometimes, I ask my wife, Monty, I don't know what day it is or what time it is. I just work for the day. My savior is my art. And I do good work. That's the important thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why do I have to talk? I just want to say that Greg, in ninety-six, was voted into the National Academy in New York that was started by, oh, God, Franklin, thank you, the man who invented SOS. Morris, thank you. He started the National Academy in eighteen twenty-five. And there are only eleven members in California. Deben Corn, Tivo, Gregory. Living members, and Gregory is one. And he's only ninety-six. And he is selling in San Francisco with a wonderful, and he paints and gets cobalt blue up the staircase. And the book from the crocker is called A Touch of Blue. And I said, Scotch Shields, how can you name it A Touch of Blue? You must have come and watched the light switches, because they're all blue fingerprints. That's my dear husband.
All right, before you run off, stay put, stay put, we're going to do pictures. I'd like to invite the Art Commission to come on up. Commissioners, we have Nan Mahone, the chair, Cheryl Greis, the vice chair. We have Sally Guthridge, we have Liz Irons, Leslie Sanderford. And then the entire city council, if you could, let's hop on out.
I think one other thing to note, that this past year, we inducted Gregory into the Elk Grove Hall of Fame as well.
My wife told me that the worst socks.
Should we do it from this angle?
Yeah.
Let's get some commissioners up here. Are you able to capture all of this?
We're going to try. Not at the moment, though.
Oh, perfect, yes.
Just get a little bit closer, then. There we go. One, two, three. One more, I forget measure.
Thank you so much.
So generous, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I've admired your work and I'm a painter also, so I really admire you. Thank you for your
Not better than me.
Oh, no, no, never, never.
Of course you are.
Thank you, it's good to see you, dear. Mr. Kondos, thank you very much. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Take care.
All right. Let's move to the next item.
As they prep the art for going over to District 56, that'll take us on to Item 4.3, a proclamation declaring September 21st through the 28th, 2019, as Elk Grove History Week. I believe in the audience, we have various members that are participating in Elk Grove History Week. I'd like to invite them to join Councilmember Soen up at the speaker podium as he presents the item. So all the folks that are participating and taking a part in Elk Grove History Week, please come forward.
Got everybody coming up, all right. There's Louis. Yeah, I think I was, I was about nineteen or twenty years old, and I was on a tour with my family back east and in New York. And growing up, or with my family, you know, my dad woke up and he said, "Hey, we're going to go and see the Presidential, Roosevelt Presidential Library." I did not want to go. I had no love or desire of history back then, you know. But going there, I spent the entire day in there, learning about his presidency and all the things that he'd done. So it was my first revelation about how important history is. And obviously, they always say, you know, never forget where you came from. And here in Elk Grove, we have a proud history, and we're very grateful that you, on the Historical Society and the Linda Mayman Lima Foundation, what you guys have done to preserve what our Elk Grove heritage and history, our proud history. So whereas, I'll just read a little bit here, but whereas the Elk Grove Historical Society, the Linda Mayman Lima Foundation, and other similarly focused organizations seek to annually celebrate Elk Grove History Week the last full week of September to foster pride for our collective heritage. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaim September 21th through the 28th, 2019, as Elk Grove History Week, encouraging our community to delve into our collective history, learn from our proud heritage, and embrace and share our many traditions. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your work. Council, why don't I come down and take a quick picture for historical purposes?
Sure, that's good.
For history?
Just stand aside a little bit, you can see more people. Daddy, we look thinner than you.
Does that help, Louis?
That's what they say.
Michelle Beannas. Michelle, that goes for you, too.
I just want to recognize Elizabeth Pinkerton, too, who couldn't be here this evening. She's done so much for history.
All right, next item.
I was, I could say a few words.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I just want to thank the mayor and the city council for this recognition and proclamation. We're real excited about History Week and the opportunity that it gives us to recognize our past and where we came from. And it doesn't matter whether we've been here a long time or we're new residents. One thing that, you know, Elk Grove residents that we all have in common is the history that we enjoy. And that makes us more than residents, that makes us family. And we would encourage everybody that is interested in history to join the Elk Grove Historical Society. We have a table out front with information on it about upcoming information, upcoming events and information. And we also have information on how to join. And we also wanted to recognize and thank the city council for their generous contribution that they gave to our recent Plow to Plate event. And that was in a fundraiser for the road school. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
Next, we'll take us on to Item 4.4, which is a presentation by the Elk Grove Branch Library. And I'd asked Branch Supervisor Janice Buck to come on up to the speaker podium. And Friends?
Hi, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. My name is Jeff Rubin, and I currently serve as the president of the Elk Grove Friends of the Library. It is a pleasure to once again join your meeting. I am here tonight to introduce our Elk Grove Public Library Branch Supervisor, Janice Buck, new to the Elk Grove area this year. And she'll be updating you on significant branch activities since her arrival, as well as provide you with a glimpse of the library's busy schedule in the coming months. The Friends of the Organization, as you know, is a community-based volunteer group dedicated to advocating for the Sacramento Public Library, supporting the library's relationship with community organizations and local businesses, and raising funds for enhanced library programs. Throughout this process, we are very proud to work closely with Janice in support of the library's mission, goals, and services. Janice Buck is both a librarian and an educator with significant experience and master's degrees in both realms. Janice's enthusiasm and dedication to her work has already proven to be of great benefit to the Elk Grove community. We are very happy and honored to have her with us. Thank you for your time. Janice?
Thank you, Jeffrey. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a picture of what's been happening at the Elk Grove Library. I know that you all know and expect to see books in the library, but we've been offering so much more. This year was our first year participating in the Summer Lunch at the Library program, where we served over two thousand lunches to children zero to eighteen years of age. This was in partnership with United Way, with meals provided through the Elk Grove Unified School District. And those were served Monday through Friday, from June through August. This gave us an opportunity to feed hungry kids, for one thing, as well as connect them with library services, as well, and information on nutrition and where to find community support for food and other activities and library programs as well. We also do every year our summer reading program. The point of the summer reading program is to fill the learning gap that happens where children who don't participate in any sort of learning over the summer lose an average of three months of learning to catch up when the school starts again. But they found that reading five books can actually bridge that gap and bring them into school ready to start learning again instead of playing catch-up. We had over two thousand, well, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-three sign-ups for summer reading. Elk Grove Branch was the highest number of finishers among youth. Finishers are participants who read over twenty-five books over the summer. So that is a significant amount of reading and learning that was happening. Since I came to the branch at Elk Grove, I started Since I came to the branch at Elk Grove, I started a teen zone, where the teens who are coming into the library now have a space where they can come and participate in library programs, study groups, those sort of things, and that's happening in our community room. So our community room is open to the teens every day, Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have between 25 and 35 teens served in that room every day. Up from when I first started, we had maybe 14 to 18. So that's become a really significant resource for the teens. We also have a job coach who comes and spends three hours, two days a week, helping people write their resumes, do practice job interviews, and know how to look for job, like to actually look for jobs and build those skills. And that's a free service that's available in the library. We have the homework zone, which is Monday through Thursday. We have high school students who come in and they tutor the younger children on math and English and other homework help. And this is twofold. This helps those young children develop their education skills, but it also helps those teens stay sharp on their skills and gives them this sense of accomplishment and community service. And I feel like that's a very important program for our youth, and I'm really excited that we offer that. Things coming up, we are starting our fourth year of Book First, which is a program with funds raised by the Sacramento Friends of the Library through the Big Day of Giving. Elk Grove anticipates visiting seven schools and giving over 1,000 books away to first graders. Oftentimes, these books are the first books that children will have to keep at home, as well as the first contact that they have with the library. And so these visits are really great opportunities for the librarians to come in and introduce this library to the children and do a quick storytime and tell them a little bit about what sort of things we're offering at the library. Overall, we gave over 9,000 books away in Sacramento County total last year and over 1,200 in Elk Grove because we had additional support from the friends, our branch friends, last year to visit more than just our seven schools. The funding for that and for Lunch at the Library are based on our school lunch numbers of which schools have 50% free or reduced lunch. And so that's how those funds are decided. The next exciting thing that we have coming up, which will be in the branch on October 17th at 6:00 p.m., are Harwood Community Conversations. This is a series of conversations that we'll be having with people across the community. Each of these is a chance for us to better understand the community and to make plans for programming and partnerships based on what the community's concerns and needs are. We'll take what we learn from these conversations and use it for, like I said, programs and different collaborations, but also when we're looking beyond our 2020 vision as Elk Grove Branch, as well as the Sacramento Public Library on a whole. And I think it was really nice tonight that we followed the Historical Society because the Elk Grove Library, as you may know, is the first free public library in California. So it's really an honor to be serving everyone here in Elk Grove, and thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 5, Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number, pardon me, of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Okay, thank you. Just as a reminder, folks, everybody has three minutes. At the two-minute, you will see the light change color to yellow, that means that please sum it up. At the mark of three minutes, I will interrupt you and ask that you step aside. We have a number of speakers that are signed up to speak. Not to be disrespectful, but I think it's important for us to honor those that are here and want to oyster concerns on issues within the community. The council would like to hear that, so please be respectful to fellow constituents. First speaker is Crystal Cornelson, Cornellison, I'm sorry, and then David Anderson.
Good evening. I stand before the city council today out of fear and disbelief that my employers are gonna have to close their doors and all of their employees are going to be standing in the unemployment line. Dory and Brian Erickson, owners of Big B Construction, are doing everything possible to prevent this from happening, and it's heartbreaking to watch them have to fight for their company that they have worked so hard for. I also stand before this council in shock and outrage. The City of Elk Grove is responsible for the dire situation that has become for Big B. Big B was forced to remove and replace a lot of concrete at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center because of what was clearly a bad design. This could have been avoided if the city had listened to the initial concerns that Big B brought up about the issue. On July 24th, 2018, the city notified Will Dan Engineering that they had considered the nature and extent of the cracking and spalling, and the determination, based on the evidence and research they did, was that Will Dan was responsible for any loss or damages that the city incurs. The city demanded that Will Dan and SWA prepare a revised design that would not result in the uncontrolled cracking from the original design. Big B removed and replaced the concrete at the city's demand out of good faith it would be compensated, only to find out later that outside of Big B's presence, the city and the design team were trying to find any possible way to shift financial responsibility onto them. The city's standing that this was in proper design was evident in July, August, September, October. On October 10th, after Big B had already started removing the concrete, their stance was still that it was Will Dan's responsibility to provide a design that would not result in failure. Why would they provide a new design if it wasn't a design error? Big B Construction has not been reimbursed for any of the costs associated with the new design and in fact are being sued by the City of Elk Grove. For what, it's not exactly clear. The aquatic center has been open since May, so I assume there's nothing wrong with the concrete. The city's current position today that somehow Big B is in any way responsible for failing is unreasonable, unjustified, and definitely not in good faith. I would say it's a breach of public trust and an abuse of position by city officials and their private sector accomplices. It's no secret that Will Dan is a very large campaign contributor. According to the city's own internal communications, they are well aware they are violating the law and something has to be done. So members of the council, can I stand in front of you today with hope that this nightmare will be ended, with hope that Big B has paid for the work that they did, and with hope that you guys will do the right thing?
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Our next speaker is David Anderson, following David is Brian Erickson.
Mr. Mayor, while our next speaker is coming up, I do want to let you know that I have to leave at 8:00 for family obligations.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is David Anderson and I would like to speak in support of Big B and the dispute with the city about the aquatic center. I am not an employee of Big B, although I have known Brian for 12 years. For citizens and council members to hear the facts of the design problems at the aquatic center and how Big B has been victimized, go to YouTube and look for Contractors Sued by Elk Grove Speaks Out, discusses aquatic center design. The real problem today with the future of Big B and the City of Elk Grove is the city did not pay its bill. I would expect staff to get defensive and try to blame Big B for something, but the fundamental facts don't change. Big B did exactly what they were supposed to do. That fact is validated by a professional firm that acts as the independent inspector of record that monitors and records all actions by Big B. They found no fault by Big B. Big B does not share any responsibility for design. They did in fact point out apparent deficiencies that were summarily disregarded by the city's design professionals. If the city council or staff feel otherwise about Big B's obligation for design, you would be in violation of state law on many levels. The city ordered Big B to remove the concrete that staff had acknowledged failed because of designed deficiencies. The city also ordered Big B to replace the failed concrete with a newly, with a new city furnished revised design. The city has not paid for any of these directives to Big B. However, the design firm has received additional monies to create the new revised design, although the reason for the initial failure can be laid at their doorstep. The City of Elk Grove appears to be the municipal equivalent of a deadbeat dad that ignores an abundantly clear obligation to pay its bills. Elk Grove has sued Big B for damages. That would be fine if you had any. You didn't pay for anything. And if staff is telling you that you are entitled to late charges, you need a new staff. The truth is that Big B is entitled to extended home office overhead for problems created by the city and its design team. This city council is placing Elk Grove in financial peril by willful ignorance and indifference. You should redeem yourselves and do the right thing and quit this shameful, put this shameful episode in the past. I would like to encourage all citizens to learn the facts and view the YouTube video, Contractors Sued by Elk Grove Speaks Out, discusses aquatic center design. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brian Erickson, following Brian Erickson is Kevin Gainesley.
I'm Brian Erickson, Big B Construction, owner of Big B Construction. And first, I'd like to ask if any of you read the information I left two weeks ago? Thank you, thank you. I'm surprised I didn't get a paycheck for that. 12-18 council meeting, Bob Murdock, in his report to the council, states that he has design problems at the Commons Aquatic Project. He then states that there is liquidated damage valued at $7,400 a day with a figure of roughly 180 days that they plan to get at the end of the project. Then Bob asked for $1.4 million so he could pay the contractors to get the job done, and after the project was done, he would sit down and talk about and get money back for this. The monies being held from Big B are clearly held in malice. Just recently, some $3 million was allotted for Will Dan to continue projects for the city, when Will Dan is the responsible party for the faulty design and the removal and replacement of nearly 50,000 square feet of concrete at the aquatics project. It is of my opinion the City of Elk Grove and Will Dan have worked in collusion on the aquatics project. I say this due to the fact that Alvin Wong is the city's architect and an employee of Will Dan, making this a clear conflict of interest. It is also known that Will Dan gives legal contributions to the council members. So in my mind, it seems that Will Dan is running the City of Elk Grove.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kevin Gainesley. Following Kevin Gainesley is Lynn Wheat.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. I'm here to talk tonight about the crosswalk near Knott's Drive and Whitelock Parkway. The young gentleman sitting in the back row back there, this was him the other day laying on the street after a car hit him. Been in contact with a few of the council members over the years, been working on this since 2017, trying to get some work done on the crosswalk. Mr. Murdock has been very gracious with his emails and saying that they are gonna put a stop, pedestrian stop light in there. Problem is, we don't know how long that's gonna take. The park is going in, right next to that, Zender Elementary's across the street, the high school, junior high, another high school, junior high. We got all these schools around there, all these kids are crossing, and that young man was, I believe, the third young man that has been hit in that crosswalk. After the first child was hit at the crosswalk, I sent an email to the city. I've worked with the EGPD, trying to get more officers out there. They're out there every week, at least a day a week, and they write tickets as fast as they can, but it still doesn't slow people down. I would like to have the council help Mr. Murdock when he comes to this council, asking for money and asking for expedited project to get the green light. Without any question, it needs to be done. We're getting, it's the third child that's been hit. His mom's gonna talk and you guys, I think, should really try and push this issue, get this crosswalk fixed, or remove it completely. Because it's in a place that is spanned by at least a mile and a half between two lights, and there's nothing to slow cars down until that is almost in the middle of Whitelock between Big Horn and Bruceville. The cars are going, you know, I've talked to a couple of motor officers. They say they don't write tickets unless they're going over 50 miles an hour. Well, that's a 35 mile an hour zone. They give them a 15 mile an hour grace. If a kid gets hit at 50 miles an hour, they're not gonna bounce off the ground like this young man back here with bruises and some scrapes. They're gonna go through the windshield and they're gonna be dead. And with your knowledge of this now, I hope you guys can help Mr. Murdock get this done in a timely manner. Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Kevin?
Come back.
Just so you know that we've been working pretty diligently with CSD or EGPD and public works on this. Believe me, it isn't going unnoticed. I know things, I know you've got background in working for public agencies and things don't work as fast as we would like, but we're definitely working on this. And I know that Bob's looking at all the options, as well as our chief, and I see we've got the general manager, Josh Green, in the back. I know that they've been involved in it as well, so.
They have, they have. And like I said, my first email was March of 2017 to the council to try and do something about this. So we're going on a few years now, so maybe we can expedite just a little bit so nobody else gets hit.
Appreciate your advocacy. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Jenny Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I know it's been a busy travel summer for me, so I've missed the last couple meetings. And equally, there's been a few others that have been traveling. Our Mayor Lee was a guest of this year's annual France-Mung Festival, which took place on July 26th and 27th. While I don't fault him for traveling, because I enjoy traveling too, whenever, wherever he chooses, I do find it troubling that he was apparently unofficially representing the City of Elk Grove. He was introduced as the mayor of Elk Grove, gave a long speech, and passed out several mayor awards. Upon his return, he made no mention of the trip that I'm aware of during council reports at the following meeting. I'm glad Vice Mayor Hume was able to hold down the people's house on the council meeting of July 24th while Mayor Lee, excuse me, was probably halfway over the Atlantic, tending to other people's business. I think this needs to be addressed, that you as councilmembers and mayor, if you're gonna choose to represent our city on travel or anywhere outside of going back to Washington, DC, or going to the commissions you serve on, that maybe we can come up with some policy around that, so that we, the residents, are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Since you're addressing this directly towards me, I'll answer that. I'm free to travel during my off time, wherever. I want to remind you that this is really a part-time job, and I accept it, and I do act as a part-time mayor, but I am finding that this is more of a full-time gig. Now, I don't limit people in addressing me as mayor, but sometimes that does happen. So I hear what you're saying, but I disagree. So thank you. Next speaker is Jenny Rodriguez.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Jenny Rodriguez, and tonight I'm accompanied by my son Rudy Rodriguez, who's in the audience today. For the sake of time, I'm just gonna go ahead and read what I have here today. I come to you this evening to discuss a situation that occurred the morning of September 17th, 2019. My son was riding his bike crossing north at the crosswalk between Bruceville and Big Horn Boulevard while the yellow crossing light was activated. My younger son, 12-year-old, whom was actually riding next to him en route to school as well... My younger son, 12-year-old, whom was actually riding next to him en route to school as well, made it to the middle of the actual crosswalk only to turn around and to wait for his brother when suddenly my 14-year-old Rudy back there was son, son was struck by a driver traveling east on Whitelock. Fortunately, this driver was driving the speed limit, but for whatever reason unable to stop in time, resulting in my stunt, excuse me, my son landing on the windshield of the driver's side of the vehicle. Many have expressed opinion through Elk Grove forums and other social media avenues stating that teens may not always pay attention, but in this case, the angle at which he was struck only proves he was midway through the crosswalk before being struck. My son was rushed to UCD and fortunately only suffered a concussion and minor scrapes and bruises. He is still out of school per doctor's orders, but I'm here to use his example of how it could have gone way worse. Was he lucky? Yes. Did I hesitate to bring him? Yes. Physically, he may appear that he's okay, but I am afraid to think, had he been walking, had he been younger, or had the driver been speeding, he may not be here with us today. For those that may be aware, last night I did receive an email from Mr. Bob Murdock, the director of Public Works, who states that he, that he has made the decision to be able to make that from a flashing beacon to a pedestrian signal. Although I do think I'll grow for their efforts in the past and for acknowledging our concerns, I do come to you this evening with a plea, on the behalf of myself and fellow neighbors, that this become a priority. I do understand that we cannot have specific dates given to us this evening, but I believe that we can get this prioritized to be done sooner rather than later. Doing so could potentially save a life. Thank you.
Thank you, and sorry for this incident.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Mark Graham. Following Mark Graham is Greg McAvoy-Jensen.
And Mr. Graham submitted a PowerPoint presentation, which you can pull up to accompany his comments.
I was pulling that up. Rudy, I hope you feel better soon, young man.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. I don't think there's one council member who read the staff report on the cell antenna policy cover to cover before the August 28th meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. I also don't think that there's one council member who read my recommendations for how to make that code zoning code amendment better before that meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mentioned this on August 28th. Please put this on the agenda. This is about the right to know. Specifically, retailers have to post a notice and hand a copy of the notice to a cellphone buyer. This is according to the City of Berkeley Right to Know, Cellphone Right to Know Ordinance. The notice tells the consumer to refer to the instructions in your phone or user manual for information about how to use your phone safely. And the key thing about it is, you don't have to worry, it's a one-page ordinance, it's a breeze, you don't have to worry about getting sued by the CTIA, because they sued the City of Berkeley, which fought it and then won. CTIA lost and the City of Berkeley won. All right. Regarding the code amendment for cell antennas, I appreciate your intention to keep the cell antennas away from residential front yards, but, um, come on. Unfortunately, I think you've created a loophole that's going to negate everything. This shows, all right, Title 2394050 shows A6 and then A6B, which is below it. A6B is the part that says you can't put one immediately adjacent to a front yard. The problem is A6, so I'm going to highlight that. I'm not going to read this thing, you should be very familiar with this because you voted on this on August 25th, and I've emailed it to you three or four different times. The problem, it's fine up to the word service, personal wireless service, and then the last nine words are where it does, it does not comply with the FCC order, which is what staff was trying to do, and it actually creates a loophole. Personal will materially inhibit personal wireless service as to a particular cell antenna. What does that mean? Can anybody on the council tell me what this means? There was no council discussion of this before you voted on it, so there's nothing on the record as to what the council thinks this means. I talked to two people on staff, Ms. Howes and Mr. Ablog, and they both described to me a process where essentially what they want the city's process to be is, if it materially inhibits personal wireless service as to a particular area, you see, as to a particular area, but that's not what it says. So if the council wants the code to say, you know, such citing limitation will materially inhibit personal wireless service as to a particular area, you should say that. For example, there's a house at 123 Main Street in Elk Grove. In front of the house, there's a front yard. In front of the front yard, there's a city-owned light pole. AT&amp;T applies for a permit to put a cell antenna on that light pole. The city denies the application, and they say, look at A6B, which is this. And then AT&amp;T says, well, guess what? A6 applies, and therefore A6B does not apply, because the citing limitation will materially inhibit personal wireless service to that cell antenna. And since you denied the cell antenna application, it will be inhibiting service.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Greg McAvoy-Jensen. Following Greg is Brenda Crass.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Greg McAvoy-Jensen, a business owner, local resident, and the first of four people to speak to you tonight from Compassion Elk Grove about our proposal for the charter, the Elk Grove Charter for Compassion. This is an opportunity to take pride in and be recognized for the compassion that already exists in our individuals and organizations. It's an opportunity to recognize that compassion is a civic virtue needed not only in families and service organizations, but throughout society, including in the public arena. Our society is at the noble and dignified point of recognizing that compassion is needed everywhere. Religions have promoted the virtue of compassion for millennia. Educational institutions have adopted it for promotion with young people. Healthcare systems are now training providers in it. Many nonprofit organizations have labored under this virtue heroically, and scientists have now discovered the individual health advantages of compassion, as well as its societal benefits. And in our city, a small group of friends has labored for months to create the Elk Grove Charter for Compassion. It was written from the ground up locally, with rounds of listening and dialogue sessions, and then writing and revision sessions, and then further consultation with a wide range of individuals. So it is with tremendous delight that we now propose to you for deliberation and eventual adoption, the Elk Grove Charter for Compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Brenda Crass. Following Brenda is Paul Merrill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name's Brenda Crass, and I'm not only a member of Compassion Elk Grove, I'm a citizen of Elk Grove. In preparing to give some comments tonight, I took time to look at Elk Grove through the eyes of a visitor or a tourist, and I was really impressed by the amount of compassionate activities, organizations, and leadership that we do have in this city. Just to name a few, the Watford Community and Aquatic Center, where classes and activities delight both young and old alike, and families can come together to enjoy the pools, parks, and services. We have uplifted people of Elk Grove, whose mission is to break the cycle of poverty by building well-being together, rethinking poverty, reframing solutions, and reshaping our community. The Elk Grove Rain Garden Plaza, which is designed to educate and build community awareness to conserve water resources, improve water quality, and attract wildlife habitat, and promote watershed stewardship through both passive learning and hands-on fun, interactive educational components. We heard just a few minutes ago about the Elk Grove Branch Library and everything that they're doing. That's also a wonderfully compassionate organization. And we haven't forgotten our veterans. We're remembering them through the Veteran and Public Safety Street Naming Program. Diversity Awareness Month, which we celebrated in August, exemplifies in many ways how we are already operating as a city of compassion. We have a motto, "One City, Many Cultures," and citizens are given the opportunity to sign a diversity pledge and agree that Elk Grove is no place to hate. Our rich interfaith community came together for a prayer of peace, justice, and unity, and citizens were able to participate in a labyrinth walk for peace. All of this culminating in a multicultural festival that included educational activities, experiences, and a way to celebrate the diversity of our friends, neighbors, and citizens. Elk Grove is already a city that exhibits compassion through its many programs, businesses, organizations, and city leadership. Now we just need to claim it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Paul Merrill. Following Paul is Laura Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Merrill, and I am both a member of Compassion Elk Grove and a member of this community in which my children and grandchildren have been and are being educated. It's my privilege to share with you the proposed language for an Elk Grove Charter for Compassion. The proposed charter reads, "Through this Elk Grove Charter of Compassion, we, the city and community in all of its diversity, commit to active caring and concern for all people, especially those in need or distress. A compassionate city dedicates itself to common efforts serving human needs and the natural environment on which everyone ultimately depends. With a compassionate vision, we will expand collaboration and opportunity for all to flourish in health and dignity. As a compassionate city, we understand that all are connected and affect each other's well-being. We seek for all to thrive. We will carefully observe how well our community's basic needs are met. Selflessly working together, we will work to find solutions to unmet needs so that all may live up to their potential and flourish. We seek to live well, healthy and strong, rich in culture, cultivating relationships to promote the well-being of both individuals and communities. As a compassionate city, we will weave together a thicker fabric of community with an expanded sense of belonging to and with each other. As a compassionate Elk Grove, we will be responsible to current and future generations, meeting the needs and aspirations of present community members while preserving natural resources for those to come. A published sustainability plan will be periodically reviewed and updated through public participation, while children will receive instruction in sustainability and community principles to encourage lifelong engagement. As the, as the primary stakeholders in the future, young persons will participate in the discussion and creation of actions leading to solutions. As a compassionate city, we will search and reach beyond what is comfortable to extend compassion with courage and purpose and practice. We will care about all people and the world. Thank you very much for your time, your attention, and for supporting compassion in Elk Grove."
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Laura Hanson. Following Laura Hanson is Mackenzie Weiser.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Laura Hanson, and I'm the co-founder of Compassionate Capital Region, which includes the seven counties within the greater Sacramento area. I'm also a former board member and current advisor to Compassionate California, which is a network of a growing number of cities. I think we're up to 17 compassionate cities within California with maybe 10 or 15 more kind of in process. And I'm also representing the international network called Charter for Compassion. It's, and I'm also the team lead for Compassionate Sacramento. In January 25th, 2017, the City Council of Sacramento passed a resolution, and we have since been building our plan, executing the plan in Sacramento. So it's very exciting to be here while Elk Grove has been doing the same thing, just building that grassroots coalition and being here with you tonight. I'd like to share a little bit about the International Charter for Compassion. The Charter for Compassion is a worldwide network that nurtures and connects the heart of global compassion in the compassionate cities movement. The Charter for Compassion fosters a peaceful world where all are treated with dignity, equity, and respect, and recognize that everyone is born with the capacity for compassion. The charter works directly with cities and communities to help them develop local action plans to meaningfully put compassion at the center of their civic work. Projects range from helping homehouse the homeless, responding to medical emergencies, and fighting Islamophobia. Many are responding to needs close to home, but with an "I" for sharing resources globally. There are over 440 cities and communities in over 54 countries across the planet that are currently involved. That's 629 million people connected to this movement around the planet. So it's, I'd like to share a little bit about what I've been watching over the two years that the group within Elk Grove has been cultivating their organizing team, is they've met with a very small group, and then over the years, that group has grown, become more diverse, grown again, grown again. And what we see is, really what Brenda was talking about, is connecting all the nonprofit organizations, all of the organizations that are simply groups of citizens and the residents in the idea that we can live in a city of compassion, and that it's definitely an aspirational goal. It's not saying we're there, it's saying this is a shared vision, shared by all.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Please consider passing the resolution. Thank you.
Mackenzie Weiser, please. Following Mackenzie is Sophia Liam.
Mackenzie, Mackenzie Weiser, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. I get to enjoy working on a lot of great, amazing projects in my capacity as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I can honestly say that my Friday mornings spent at Pete's Coffee with Elk Grove compassion have been some of the best hours spent of my entire year. Working with these group, this group of individuals has been not only uplifting to me as an individual, but just to involve the community. We've had several living room conversations where we opened it up to many folks within the community, and we revised, and we thought about it, and we penciled down sentence by sentence, you know, trying to think about, you know, what would actually stick here in Elk Grove and what would actually make a difference. So with everything you've heard, what we're asking is if you could consider having us back for an actual presentation on an agendized item for a resolution to consider adopting a charter for compassion here in Elk Grove. I know you can't say anything now, but think about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Sophia Liam. Following Sophia is Ashley Kinstall.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just here in support of my neighbors and my own kids and my neighbor's kids. I also live in Whitelock, and I had close calls myself. The problem is that at times there are two lanes, one car stops and the other one doesn't, and that's how I had a few close calls with my kids. One of them was three months at a time, where I had to run, I had to turn around rather quickly to avoid the car hitting me, and it's actually pretty terrifying. It's kind of, it's very scary that now I have to walk the extra half a mile just so I can go and cross the street, and then come back the other half a mile to make it to the school centers. I know the city has been working hard on this. I know they've made progress. Initially, we didn't have a flashing light, and now we do. And then we also had a patrol pla, a patrol person that is always there, but it seems like now we shouldn't be using our patrol resources on the day-to-day basis, because that's a, that is not a long-time solution. We want a long-time solution, and we want the city to expedite this, because every day we hear about someone having a close call, and the drivers just don't stop. When I turned around with my kid that I was holding for three months, and I actually fell, the driver didn't even stop, and that's actually very scary. So please, if, help us out, there is three schools there, there is so many parks, so many people cross the street, we need a light there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last speaker is Ashley Kinstall.
So as you know, last week, our young neighbor was hit as he used a crosswalk on Whitelock Parkway to walk to school. He is not the first child hit by a car at the crosswalk, but I'm hoping he will be the last. I'm asking that the city expedite the process for fixing the crosswalk and place a crossing guard at the crosswalk during school traffic hours until the construction is complete. Hundreds of kids use the crosswalk on the way to and from the three schools in the area, as well as the numerous parks, including the developing Oasis Park, which is in my neighborhood and will also draw more pedestrian traffic. I use this crosswalk nearly every day with my toddler in the stroller, and there have been many times where people do not stop at all. I have also been the driver who did not see the flashing lights despite looking directly at the crosswalk, and luckily did not strike a pedestrian. This crocwa, this crosswalk is dangerous and needs to be updated, so the structures and plants do not block the line of vision of our pedestrians and drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing that there are no initial members of the public senate to speak, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. A few items to briefly mention. First is this month, September is Disaster Preparedness Month. We had an article in our most recent city newsletter highlighting ways that the citizens of Elk Grove can prepare themselves for the next disaster. of Elk Grove can prepare themselves for the next disaster. City staff has also been actively engaged in emergency preparedness activities. We have a citywide emergency preparedness, emergency operations center activations drill tomorrow that we're going to be going through. We just went through with the City Council earlier tonight, as well as some emergency operation procedures. So I want to thank Chief Albright and his staff for helping us get that organized. Also, our animal shelter is nearing completion. We plan on doing a soft opening to the general public starting on this Saturday. The grand opening will be held on October twelfth, which is also a Saturday. So if you're looking to adopt your next cat or dog, please come down to the Elk Grove Animal Shelter and find your next family member. There's also a community open house scheduled for next Tuesday here in the council chambers at six P.M., talking about opportunities for development north of the city's District Fifty-Six site, where we have our community center, which is nearing completion as well, and the Aquatics Center. City owns approximately twenty acres that we're looking for development opportunities to turn that into a mixed-use project that could incorporate uses such as entertainment, restaurants, retail, housing, office, and a hotel. So we're going to be presenting some design alternatives and options for the city, for the members of the city, members of the public to comment on, and that'll be presented by our consultants and staff on next Tuesday at six P.M. Finally, coming up on October second is our Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks at forty-seven twenty Elk Grove Boulevard between ten AM and twelve-thirty, coming out and mingle with our fine police officers and ask questions and find out how they're, what they're doing to protect the residents and businesses of our community. If you can't make that, they're also sponsoring a Cone with a Cop, which is on Wednesday, October sixteenth, the McDonald's. Come get an ice cream cone and visit with our Elk Grove Police Officers. That is it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, this material is up on the website. There are also updates on all of the city's high priority projects. Members of the public can find in more information.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. All right. Next item.
Takes us to Section Seven, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay. First up to that is Councilman Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I got a question for Bob on the White Lock, that running east-west, is there also a morning and afternoon sun issue that is part of the problem there?
Not in the accident reports I've read. At the time of day, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have had an impact, but I'm sure there are certain times of day it would have an impact.
Okay. And I would support bringing, you know, bringing that back for the rest of the council. I don't know if you need anything from us or if you already have that, everything you need to move that forward.
Every year, we have some general engineering funding that we set aside for unexpected items, and so we have sufficient funding to go ahead and finish the design of the conversion. I think we'd likely be able to, need to come back for, to secure funding for actual construction. So we're working, we've already requested proposals from a couple of design firms that we have on-call contracts for, and so we anticipate starting the design relatively quickly. Based on that, we'll get a schedule. Right now, I just don't have a schedule as to when we'll be able to finish design and go to construction, so hopefully we'll have that in the near future.
So for now, you're good with everything from us?
I'm good. We're already moving forward. We're good.
Okay. Perfect. Just wanted to touch base, went to the region business barbecue. They've been doing that for quite a few years now, and, you know, they're really good at recognizing all the regional businesses and support a lot of the things that we've been able to accomplish here in Elk Grove, so it's always good to go and support them. Went to the Harvest of Hope Dinner for the Elk Grove Food Bank, and they recognized Assemblyman Cooper for the several million dollars that he was able to get from the state to help with either the purchase and/or building of a permanent facility for them. Another great event out at the Sheldon Inn. And that's all I have for them. Oh, I have, excuse me, I do have one other item. Earlier tonight, we had David Lima here with his family, and he rep, you know, since his wife passed away, he put together the Lima May Man, the Linda May Mahon Lima Foundation, and they had their fourth annual performance, used the Sheldon High School entertainers to do readings based on Irene West. And I know I wasn't here the night Irene West was awarded, but very, very phenomenal. She was the first black teacher in Elk Grove. And they were able to put on a performance, celebrate all of her achievements, and it was a great event. Those type of things are very rare. I've never seen these from other communities, to be able to see them bringing basically pioneers in many different areas from Elk Grove, bring them forward. As they mentioned with Gregory the Painter, that they originally did a piece on him, and then Irene West, as well as several other people that they've done. So I just wanted to make sure to recognize their efforts, and it was a great event. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Wayne.
Thank you, sir. I had the opportunity to stand with our Senator Dr. Pan and Attorney Becerra. Dr. Pan was able to secure one point five million dollars to do research on sex trafficking in our region as it has increased, and the recipient of that funding will be the Community Against Sexual Harm. So that's a win for our region there, since what they found is sex trafficking has become increasing in our region because of the freeways that are also close and go from one end to the other. I attended the American Legion's POW MIA Remembrance at Rhodes Schoolhouse. Today's our first session of our Links Law Enforcement Program that is taking places, that is taking place at ARI, Urban League, and La Familia. I want to thank the chief for sending our lieutenant and our sergeants and a couple of our officers out there to serve on the panel tonight. And I see Josh Green from CSD, who will be starting the Footsteps to Fire Program here with CSD, so thank you very much for working with us on that. And then I want to also announce that I will be giving out five, five-hundred-dollar community seed grants to community-based organization and youth organizations to encourage them to put forth ideas that would promote community, environment, and city improving potentials. There will be an info session here on Tuesday at two, and then on Wednesday at five-thirty P.M. Encourage a lot of our young people who serve in clubs, at school, and organizations here in our community to apply for it. And then I, you know, I wanted to see if we can get, we heard quite a few speakers from the compassion. I do want to hear more about it. I was wondering if maybe we can get them to come out and do a presentation so we can learn about exactly what it is that they want to do here in our city.
Sure. Sure. You got it.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, we had a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting and a Sacramento Council of Governments meeting. Attended the Harvest of Hope as well, honoring Assemblymember Cooper for the, and also an event hosted by the Elk Grove Food Bank. Had the honor of attending SAC Business Awards with our mayor. We received an award for our Aquatics Center design, and ELS Architects was recognized for their design, so congratulations to them. Also had a very successful inaugural event for Pause for Purpose with Vice Mayor Hume and Friends of the Elk Grove Animal Shelter, raising funds for pets of families in need for their medical and dental assistance. Had a lot of great support from the community, including the food bank and Chicks in Crisis, their volunteers. Assemblymember Cooper's staff showed up, as well as Josh Green back there from CSD. So anyways, a lot of, a lot of community support around it and for a great cause. And tomorrow, we've got our regular library authority meeting, so thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I also attended the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. Nothing to report from that. I also attended the region business barbecue, which was held at the Fog Willow Farms out off Wilton Road, so it's right here in our backyard this year. So it was very convenient, a nice event. Want to congratulate Councilmember Soon on an amazing inaugural event, a great turnout, great support for the Pause for Purpose, benefiting the Friends of the Elk Grove Animal Shelter and helping people who cannot afford it to seek medical attention for their pets. And then also had a paratransit meeting and an RT meeting, and the details of the situation are still being ironed out, but it is now public information that RT has filed a notice of termination for paratransit to no longer provide the Americans with Disabilities Act service for the RT network. How that's going to look when it's all said and done, I don't know, and obviously, funding is going to be a, oh, a battle, I suppose, of who gets what monies and who, what, who's left with what allocations. So that will play out over the next six months until April, and then July first, the four-way agreement that basically calls out the governance of paratransit will go away. Then I understand that we're in a lawsuit, and so there's not a lot that we can discuss with respect to Big B, but I do know that when the work was being performed, we kind of knew that there was probably a little bit of blame to go around, some of which might have been designed, some of which might have been installation, some of which might have been material, and we do not contract, or did not contract directly with Big B. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our contract is with a general contractor, Arntz Construction.
And so we, we don't technically owe them directly any money?
That's right. There is no brevity of contract with them, so any money would be between the city and Arntz Construction.
And where are we with settling up, or is that still a part of contention of the overall lawsuit and responsibility for, for the shoddy work?
It's still an active, it's still an active lawsuit, so we'll, we'll be going to mitigation, you know, mediation later this year.
And is there any remedy or line of communication we can provide to give them advice on with whom their material interest lies? Because for them to come and make accusations of campaign contributions and other things when we're not even the ones paying them.
Our attorney has been in contact with their attorney in attempts to provide that direction.
Okay. I mean, I guess at the end of the day, I'm just, we're talking about a compassionate city. Here's a family that has their livelihood on the line, maybe some fault of their own, maybe not, maybe they're being hung out to dry by a bigger fish, I don't know, but I, and I get that we're in a lawsuit, but is there anything we can do to, to at least provide them some direction, some remedy, let them know that we're not trying to take them out? I mean, is...
So...
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, because I understand that this, there's legal ramifications, you, you have to be careful what you can and can't say. Obviously, Mr. Hobbs isn't here because of a situation in his family, so I'm not trying to put you in an uncomfortable position, but I'm just saying to listen to the, the story that's being told, you know, I mean, it just, it's, it stinks, and I know that we didn't do anything...
Right.
Other than demand that something look right, and there is some blame to lay somewhere.
That's correct.
But that shouldn't, that, that in and of itself shouldn't drive somebody out of business.
Right. The city is, is attempting to work with the general contractor to try to resolve some of these situations. We were working on that as early as a couple hours ago, so we're, the staff is not sitting on its laurels. We're attempting to address the situation to the best we can, both inside and outside of the courtroom.
And so our lawsuit with Big B is to preserve remedy to the extent if they're found to have had some fault in their workmanship? I mean, are we just throwing spaghetti at the wall at this point because we don't know where the real issue is?
We're not throwing spaghetti at the wall. They're, they're included due to some concerns with the workmanship, so I think that's probably the most I can say.
Okay. And I understand that you've got to be cautious, and you can't reveal strategy, but I'm just, I'm trying to get to the heart of, you know, the situation with respect to, I, I take them at face value that this is probably a big enough chunk of their cash flow that, you know, I, just, the idea of sinking a business doesn't sit well with me, but whatever, we're, we're in a lawsuit, so I guess that's how it goes. You sent out an email with respect to the, the traffic light at the pedestrian, and then Councilmember Detrick kind of followed up. Do you have a rough timeline as far as design, or when you might be back asking for funds to get that done?
Unfortunately, I don't. I know that we, like I said, we have on-call contracts that are set up with design firms, and we've reached out to a couple of them to get a proposal. A lot of it depends on, you know, quite frankly, how busy they are, and so we're going to push them to go as fast as we can, and, and I'll come back with a, with a schedule as soon as I can. It's, but again, you know, we're lucky in the fact that the, what we recently did, the foundations, the pole, the mast arm, everything was designed in order to accommodate signal heads, so all of that's going to be saved, and that is a great help, but we need to, we need to have a design. There's a number of utilities in the area that we're concerned with making sure, because there is no power to that. It's all, it's done with photovoltaic power, so we have to run a power. We need to get a controller and a cabinet, and so it's a material issue, it's a utility conflict issue, and we just, we need to work through it.
Okay.
So I'd love to be able to give you a date. I'd love to be able to give the family a date. I'm just not comfortable doing it at the moment.
Sure. Sure. I appreciate that. In the interim, have we reached out to the school district to see about providing a crossing guard, at least during morning and afternoon?
I have not. I did, I did note that suggestion. I wrote that down. I thought that was an interesting suggestion, and we certainly can follow up with the school. You know, we do have a traffic committee that includes the school and our Public Works and Police Department, and so we can reach out through that, see if they'd be able to do that.
Great. Thank you. And then I'll just say to council, I was, had a phone call from a former council member who, in building a house out in the rural area, was hit with some pretty significant fees from the county for water connection and drainage. And, and so I've been in contact with Shane. Shane is aware of the issue. Shane has helped him, give him some information, but just consider this as kind of a standing notice, Shane, that if you feel something needs to be brought back, if we need to renegotiate with the county, or if we need to bring those fees in-house, or whatever it needs to do. I mean, it's significant. It's in the magnitude of thirty to sixty thousand dollars fees that are going to the county, so. And then the last thing is just Josh Green. I just wanted to say his name, because everyone else has said his name so far.
Josh Green. There you go. The thing I want to highlight is the Biz Journal Awards Breakfast, in which the city received the, an award for the Aquatics Center. It was an opportunity for us to kind of showcase and brag about what a beautiful job it was, and certainly goes to the staff, you know, Jason in his office, the Public Works, and the whole team. And, you know, I felt very fortunate to be on stage receiving it, but really, I think the credit goes to all of you and working so hard. So, you know, one more thing for us to, to, to put under our belt. The other thing I'd like to highlight is I have had an opportunity to sit down and talk with executive members of the Chamber of Commerce, talking about how we can actually expand and be more inclusive with our state of the city. And so we have some ideas that we're floating around, kind of checking with the board and see whether they're comfortable with that, but I kind of foresee our state of the city being a little bit larger than what we've seen before, and I also foresee that a lot of the business owners that are doing business in the city of Elk Grove should be participating in this, and when I sat down and spoke with, with Angie and Kevin, I recognized that there were folks that should be engaged but aren't, so that's an effort that I'll be joining with the board and also Angie and Kevin, and reminding them how important it is to work together and to be a cohesive team here in Elk Grove. And those are the two things I'd like to highlight, and tomorrow, I have our quality. And that is it. All right. Next item.
Takes us on to Section Eight, Consent Calendar Items. I would like to note for Section Eight, there was a staff memo that was circulated in regards to Item Eight Twelve that had language to add to Exhibit B of the resolution, and if that is amenable to the City Council, that's included as part of the motion.
I'll move consent with the adjustment from the staff memo.
Got a motion with the consent, with the green, green sheet. Got a motion with the consent, with the green sheet, and got a second. Want to open for public comment, seeing no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. And is there, all right, let's call the vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Right, next item.
That'll take us on to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the zoning map and a resolution approving a tentative parcel map for the 8711 Bradshaw Road tentative parcel map project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm David Ulrey, Associate Planner, and tonight I have a presentation for you on the Bradshaw Road tentative parcel map. The project is located at 8711 Bradshaw Road in the Elk Grove rural area. The project consists of a rezone from AR 5 to AR 2 of approximately 10.2 acres, as well as a tentative parcel map for two parcels, one being 3.3 acres and the other 6.9. And no new development is proposed in conjunction with this application. And on September 5th, 2019, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the project. And here we have the existing AR 5 zoning detail and the proposed AR 2, along with the proposed map boundaries. And so here we have the detail of the parcel map with the northern portion of the property showing the access easement and driveway, and a floodway easement and trail easement running along Laguna Creek. And no further environmental review is required per Section 15183 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, staff recommends that the council find that no further environmental review is required pursuant to Section 15183, adopt an ordinance approving the rezone, and adopt the resolution approving the tentative parcel map, subject to the findings and conditions. And that concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience.
Are there any questions? One question, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Not a question, I believe, is this your first presentation before us?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, anything else? Ken, nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
I'll declare a public hearing open. I want to invite the applicant to come up and speak. There is no time limit.
Hi, good evening. This is Mike Robertson, Baker Williams Engineering Group. I'm here to represent the applicant. Want to thank staff for their presentation and also working with staff throughout the entire project, been very nice to work with. Went through the conditions of approval. We have no questions and no problems with them. I'm here to see if you have any questions for me.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. Perfectly clear. Thank you. Okay, at this point, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Mr. Applicant, would you like to come back and make closing statements? Are you good? All right, you're good. Right, want to declare public hearing closed. Counsel will be reassigned direction.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to State Secret Guidelines, Section 15183, and approving rezone for the 8711 Bradshaw Road tentative parcel map project, PLNG 18-072, Assessor's Parcel Number 122-0190-005.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, next motion.
I'll move motion number two to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
That'll take us on to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider approval of the fiscal year 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant, CBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I'm here tonight asking you to approve our annual report for our Community Development Block Grant Program. We bring this report to you every year as required by HUD after a public comment period. This year, we received, as in most years, we received no public comments, and you've had a chance to review the report. To quickly summarize, we continued to provide a support to a number of Elk Grove nonprofits, including for housing counseling, Meals on Wheels program, Support Works, and some of our homeless services. And we also completed a major ADA accessibility improvement project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? No questions?
Thank you.
Perfectly clear. All right, thank you. I want to declare a public hearing open, and want to open for a public comment opportunity, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare a public hearing closed. Counsel will be reassigned direction.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Next item.
That'll take us on to Item 9.3, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing use of the bond opportunities for land development or BOLD program and authorizing the California Municipal Finance Authority to accept applications from property owners.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, council members. My name is Brandon Merritt, and I'm here tonight to present the decision to Item 9.3. Tonight's public hearing is to adopt a resolution authorizing use of the bond opportunities for land development, also known as the BOLD program, within city limits. This is a necessary action as the resolution authorizes the California Municipal Finance Authority to act as a conduit financing authority to finance fees and infrastructure for developments within the city. Specifically, such actions by CMFA would include accepting applications from property owners, conducting proceedings and levying special taxes pursuant to the Melrose Community Facilities District Act of 1982, and other related actions to a financing. Please note that the adoption of this resolution is separate and apart from amendments to the land secured financing policy that were made on May 22nd, 2019, as well as on tonight's consent calendar. Those amendments to the land secured financing policy are purely from a policy standpoint regarding the use of BOLD within the city as an alternative financing option to the existing skip program and priority uses of the proceeds. Thank you, and I am available to answer any further questions.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. Perfectly clear. Thank you, sir. At this point, want to declare a public hearing open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no, well, actually, we have one member of the public. Lynn Wheat. Ms. Wheat, come on down, please.
Good evening. I understand the intent of this action is primarily to add another tool to the developer's toolbox that allows them to pursue bond financing for improvements and minimize their own upfront cash and to pass that cost on to the future buyers who will assume the bond repayment debt as an assessment. My first, I have a couple questions. My first question is if bond financing is approved under this BOLD program and recognizing that residential subdivisions, for example, are built incrementally, is the applicant, i.e. the developer, financially responsible for repaying the remaining bond debt minus the amount being collected from the new property owners? In other words, until all of the land is developed and sold, are the developers on the hook for making that bond payment? My second question, second, and as a state taxpayer myself, if the developer defaults on the bond for their obligated portion of repayment, are the state taxpayers on the hook for making the bond investors whole, or do the investors lose? I hope I can have my questions answered.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Seeing that there are no additional speakers signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Declare a public hearing closed. Counsel will be reassigned direction.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I wonder if, Brandon, could you address Ms. Wheat's comments, please, on those two questions? Basically, the developer responsibility, so yes, if the developer defaults, yeah, that's what I was asking.
Well, I would defer, I think the Director of Finance might want to address that.
So how the community facility districts work in this BOLD program is a CFD, is a tax levy is placed on the properties that are in the district. And that tax levy is what pays for the debt service on the bond. So if a developer owns the property when the tax levy is on, the developer would be responsible for making that tax levy, which then flows to make the debt service payment. And there is no legal or any type of obligation for city taxpayers, county taxpayers, state taxpayers to come to the rescue if tax levies were not sufficient to make the bond payments. What the bond documents would say would require foreclosure on the properties that would be the way to recoup the monies to pay the bondholders.
And to tease out that last thought a little bit, the indebtedness rides with the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
We, as an example, the last recession, much of Laguna Ridge ended up in that very spot, so.
To answer also the question, councilmembers, that did happen with Laguna Ridge, and the city instituted foreclosure actions, and we were able to help make the district whole. So this does happen sometimes during economic downturns, but the city has tools to help recover those funds and make sure that when it is time, a good time, that the money is available and that sort of thing. So, but there won't be an instance where a general fund money or anything like that would be in jeopardy.
And I just, Brad, if you could elaborate, but my understanding is this program for folks watching, you know, some might say, hey, well, why do we need this? And it actually takes the city out to an degree, so we don't need to administer this program.
That's right. The CMFA is the administrator of the program, and so the city's administrative burden is greatly reduced.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution.
There's a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Next item.
That'll take us on to Item 9.4, which is a public hearing to receive public input regarding the composition of election districts for transitioning to by-district council member elections. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. I have a presentation. Also, just to want to note, as I go up to the speaker podium, I know Councilmember Wayne, you said you had an appointment to make at 8:00.
I do want to stay for this because I do have a request from you.
And good evening again. This presentation is going to be a repeat from what I was saying back in September 11th, but I will keep it truncated and just kind of summarize where we are to date. This is the public hearing to continue the process of transitioning to by-district elections. Just a quick overview is that we've made that declaration through a resolution with the intent to switch to a by-district system. Briefly go over what our current map looks like, but really what the intent of the last public hearing that we had and the public hearing this evening is to receive input on the composition of the district. And really what that means is those considerations that we want to take forward as far as creating a map or presenting maps in our next set of public hearings. These public hearings are all required through state requirements, that the action to transition to by-district is something that can be done by vote of the City Council, but it requires this process of consecutive public hearings. We'd get into some different territory. If we talked about doing anything else to change the structure of our governance, those are typically items that go to measures, require different levels of review. But this is a process that we've stepped into going into this transition to by-district, or transitioning to a by-district system of elections. And the last part of just the presentation is just a recap of what we heard from last meeting on September 11th. So the intent to transition, we started this process on August 28th. Again, this is what triggers us by state law to have a series of public hearings. This is the second hearing of four that we have projected, though more may be called upon by the council as required. These first two are really to provide this input on how we want the districts to be drawn with considerations we want to take into account as a community in creating our electoral districts. The next two public hearings are the ones in which we're going to be drafting and looking at maps, or we're going to look at drafts of maps. So really, tonight is that opportunity to provide input. Is there something different that we want to see than what we currently have today? And as we look into the schedule, we have this second public hearing tonight, and we have two more scheduled going into the month of October, our regular meetings on October 9th and October 23rd. We have our current district map, and this is the one that was created back in 2011. This is the process, as I described last time on September, at the September 11th meeting, this was the process that we went through with redistricting. So when we talk about the composition of our districts and what we've done, we've provided a lot of input, and so has our community through this process. We provided a lot of input about the composition of Elk Grove using that 2011, or the 2010 census data. And it got us to this point where, when we took that snapshot back in 2011. And one of the snags that we find here is that we don't have new data when we're going to be looking at the composition of districts. And in fact, we had some comments to that effect of just use our prior data. Though we have an increase, more than likely, projected by population, as far as what we've been getting from the Department of Finance of the state of California, we're not going to have that next redistricting process until the census is over. And that's not until next year. That'll be 2021, we'll actually have new data. So for whatever process we do, whatever we look at the composition of districts, that data that we're going to be using, whether we look at redrawing new maps or look at the map that we currently have, we're going back and actually looking at a picture from 2011, 2010 basis. And we'll probably be approaching this whole process of district drawing in the future. We'll come back and do it again when we have new data. But that's a process that won't occur until 2021. What we're doing right now is looking at getting a map up for adoption within the next month. Just to review that first public hearing that we had on September 11th, we received information just about the composition of the districts, just stilling it down. There were still some folks that were talking about the benefits of from-district systems, by-district systems. This is a process in which we're looking to transition to by-district. And those comments that came out from those both submitted by written comment or also spoken at the meeting, there are folks talking about how there is already a diverse population represented, at least in the district that they lived in. There were some comments just about preserving the rural lifestyle. And then we had comments of the folks that were supporting the current map that we have. So looking at that current map, acknowledging that though our data is outdated, it is the only data that we have in order to look at this kind of comparison of what's out there. And so we did have speakers that were saying, use our existing map and use that census data, and use that to make this transition now for by-district. The process will be redone when we get into 2021 with updated data. And there was a comment about considering inclusion of more council seats. Again, this, I just fall back to part of the title, is the Election Code section that we're operating in. The process to make the transition from the from-district system into a by-district system is for four council seats and the mayor. Under the California state codes, we have the ability to do this through a process of a vote by the council. If we start considering anything about more council seats or any other change in governance, those are issues that we, as a general law city, we can't just do those by vote of the council. It's the type of thing that we'd have to consider as a measure. So when you start talking about these issues about additional seats or creating more districts, that's a different issue outside of this issue of going to a transition to a by-district system with our current governing structure, which is mayor and four council seats. So with that, we're at the second hearing to receive additional input regarding the composition of the districts. And again, this will inform kind of the decision-making for what maps are going to come back for consideration. And folks will have opportunities to still comment on maps that come forward and things of that nature. What we'd be doing is from the input that we get tonight, from the input from September 11th, those would create those maps or map or maps that we'd come back on October 9th and October 23rd to consider. With that, there's just another look at our current district map. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer those, but then it's another opportunity for us to receive input from the public and from the council.
Any questions?
I do have a question. So I just wanted to clarify, the next meeting is when there'll be maps or a map, a map, presented to us, right?
That is the intent. So currently, we have a map with districts. It's one of the unique positions that we have for Elk Grove, is that we've had a district map all along, and it was one that was created for the community. Engaging that this is guaranteed to be one of the maps that will be coming back in the report for October 9th.
And I have to leave here, but I just wanted to ask, and I don't know if Mr. Bierman, this goes to you or Mr. Lindgren, several months ago or several meetings ago, we had talked about this, and before we decided to move towards the by-district model and adopted that, we also presented either a firm or an expert that did a research on the way we have it now, which is from-district. I'm wondering if we could bring that back and present that at the next meeting during this as well, too, as we bring in the maps? Is there an opportunity, or is that something that we can tie into this?
I think part of our objective is that the, with the resolution of intent to look at the by-district, you did give us authority to go out and get a demographer. And part of the process of any maps that we'd be presenting before the of the process of any maps that we'd be presenting before the council is those maps would be evaluated and reviewed by the demographer. So we could bring that back and we can coordinate, but I believe it's our same demographer as far as the details.
I think she's referring to before we did the resolution of intent, we looked at whether or not to transition to the by district system, the city engaged services of the demographer. This would have been, I think, in the springtime.
That's right.
And so you're looking for maybe the results of that survey.
Correct.
Something that we can take a look at, if we can bring it back.
Yeah, the work product following the first letter that we received.
Yes, yes, correct.
And I believe, Mr. Lindgren, you're the one that presented on it, right? Or was it?
Yes.
Or was it John?
Yeah, when we first brought that back, Jason did a presentation about our entire system of elections and by district or the from district system that we have and how that was put together and some of the demographic information that Jason put together, and it was part of that. So if you would like us to revisit or bring back some of that material?
Yes, I would.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, so we had one demographer set about to do a certain task, that we're going to be able to look at that information. The current demographer, are they going to be proposing maps based on anticipated population growth from when these districts were drawn till now, or what exactly are we paying them to do?
Our current demographer is in wait, ready to draw maps and give analysis of those maps that are proposed. And so if there are other proposals that come forward, we want to be poised to be ready to respond to those in order to move this process through the public hearing process and have someone on call and available to evaluate maps that are proposed, new map concepts or anything of that nature. So we would be looking for direction from the council if there are different aspects that you want to consider for maps going forward. That's the purpose of us having the demographers, they're on call and ready to go.
So, okay, in that case, then, you know, my goal is to not see us have to really reinvent the wheel after the next census and try and get as close as we can so that we don't run into a situation where potentially somebody could be elected to a district that then they get drawn out of. And so I know that in District Four, we've seen the most amount of growth, simply because that's the new growth area, whereas in District One, there hasn't been a lot of growth. I think in District Three, there hasn't really been a lot of growth. In District Two, there's been a little bit. So somehow where District One, District Three, and District Four meet, I think there probably needs to be a little bit of trade-off that a little bit of District Four's numbers go up into at least District One, if not District Three as well.
Are we, we going to talk about this now, or do we need to, should we go to public comment first? I'm just, I don't know.
Let's do this, let's go to public comment, and then we'll deliberate on this. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jason. Want to declare public hearing open. I want to open public comment. We have two speakers lined up to speak. First speaker, Shirley Peters. Following Shirley is Randy Becker. Come on up, please. There are three speakers.
You received my letter, but I'm going to read it in a smaller fashion. The Gresham residents feel that an accusation alleging that one faction of our Elk Grove citizen's revote to suppress or politically exclude another faction of our citizens on the basis of race cast aspersions on the reputation, integrity, and character of all who are citizens of Elk Grove. Our city's reputation as a whole should be protected and defended from such demeaning allegations. It is our understanding that the California Voting Rights Act prohibits an at-large election system from being imposed in a manner that impairs the ability of a protected class to elect its preferred candidates or influence the outcome of an election. We would hope that the city council and the city attorney would do an extensive analysis relative to the from district system. If the city council judiciously determines that our present system unintentionally, but in fact, does violate the voting and election rights, then it should take whatever actions are needed to rectify the transgression. However, if the city council judiciously determines that it does not, then the will of the citizens of the Elk Grove, of Elk Grove as established by a recent fair voting process should stand. We have a very good system here in Elk Grove, where all voters determine the makeup of the city council, but at the same time, each geographic area of the district has representation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Shirley.
Randy Becker, following Randy Becker is Patricia Holmes.
This issue really boils down to the truth, and unfortunately, it's become a political football and not the truth. What I heard at the last meeting, what I've seen in print, what I've seen on social media against this council, against this city, is disgusting, outrageous, disgusting. As I stated before, all council members elected, were elected, won their district seats, and were elected by citywide vote, but nobody that won citywide vote lost their district vote, not at any time. That's a fact. I talked last time about the money. They talk about going outside the area. Our own mayor uses his First Amendment right to go outside this city, to go outside this state, but it's his First Amendment right. And the only way you can stop that is to go to reform, and then you're going to get PACs coming in, which will have unlimited amount of resources that are uncontrollable. We had somebody come up here to say that we want smaller districts. That's not what this is about. That's not factual. Somebody come up here and said, you guys don't look like them. Well, Mr. Cooper sat on the dais for 15 years, Sophia Sherman, 12. We don't have enough seats to fit everyone that lives on this earth by their ethnicity. I don't know what to say. As far as drawing districts, have any of you taken a look at the district map that CSD just put together? It's outright ridiculous. Mr. Brewer is going to end up with probably 60,000 or 70,000 voters. And you want to make a better, something better before the census? There is nobody that's going to be able to do that, nobody. Till the 20, 20 census. And the truth of the matter is, it's all been political and it's not been truthful. And I hate picking on you, Mr. Mayor, but you're for by district, and those you politically associate with need to start telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, but I will defer that debate for a later discussion. Next speaker is Patricia Holmes. Following Patricia Holmes is Linhui.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Holmes, and I have lived in the Elk Grove District for more than, approximately 10 years now, and I would like to speak in favor of supporting the by district model. And I also would like to ask that we support, that you do this with whatever current census data that you have in order so that we might be able to move forward with this. There's always room for improvement. We never know when that's going to happen. You may need to create more members of your council, you may not. It just depends. You may need to redistrict. I heard him talk about the map being drawn up. You may have to restructure your map so that it might come out a little bit more evenly. But I do feel that the people of Elk Grove need to have representation by districts, and I would ask the city council to hold this responsibility and to continue the work that you're doing in order to get us to vote by districts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our final speaker is Linhui.
I support the by district, but for other reasons that have been mentioned. I think that there's a lot of money in the game here, and I think that if we go to a by district where there's a smaller area, then we'd have an opportunity to have more enter into the campaign. I think many are discouraged by learning about how much money you need to run a successful campaign. And we also know, and we could go ahead and debate this, but incumbents tend to have an advantage over anybody new running. And so that is why I support by district, is for other reasons that have been mentioned this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speakers signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. All right, deliberations, gentlemen?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, you know, by district, from district, at large, I don't believe there's any perfect system. You know, everyone has its flaws, everything has its advantages, disadvantages, depending on when you look at it, what you're looking at. I will say, though, we've been talking a lot about elections by district, easier to elections, elections are cheaper, all these things, but we haven't, and maybe it's because the only ones who truly understand the challenge of governing is the ones when you're actually in the seat. And I would, I would just say that, you know, a by district system does bring some challenges, just like this system has some challenges with governing. And so in consideration of, you know, that, of how can we move to a by district system but also maintain, in my opinion, what would be good governance, and that is trying to, right now, we're from district, as you all know, but because we're elected at large, folks within our district vote for us or against us, folks outside of our district vote for us or against us. So we are definitely accountable to residents, even those who live outside of our district. Fact of the matter is, in a by district system, the voting accountability, although we're all going to try to do the best we can for the city at large, but the voting accountability is limited to only the people within our district because that's just how it is. So, but when you want to maintain a community, you know, in general, the at-large system, if you ever wondered, I mean, it just, it's viewed as, you know, we're one community, we're voting as one community, and so that's, you know, you've got that large system. And so how do you best maintain that? And so I've been trying to look at the existing districts, and there's a couple things. One, you know, I guess, and this gets back to my, or my comment about these maps, if we're going to look at maps, I'd like to, I'd like our demographer to take a look at a map that might, it's more radical because I want to see us going across from west to east. There's always been a, there's always been a pseudo divide, you know, there's a joke that if you're west of 99, you're Laguna, you're not Elk Grove. There's always that kind of joke. So I, I thought, you know, maybe we ought to look at, you know, more of a horizontal, if you're looking, if you're looking north-south, more of a horizontal type of thing where we're, you know, we're maintaining that continuity across 99. So that's one, that's one version. And then another, for District One, if you look at the west part of the city, I'm the only representative for the entire west side of the city. If you look at to the north, myself and Councilmember Detrick represent the northern boundary. If you look at to the south, Councilmember Wayne, Councilmember Hume represent that side, and if you look at the east, Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Detrick are very engaged in the rural community and on the east side. But if you look at the west, the far west, it's only me. And if we go to a by district system, getting back to my earlier comment about advocacy in governance and, you know, the ability to advocate for a community, I would like to see a second member of the council that is, joins me on the west side to advocate on that community. We do have flood risk on that side that's going to take years to address, and I want to make sure that, you know, going forward, whoever's in these chairs, that there's two representatives on that side. So that would be a second version that I'd like the, I guess to you, Jason, is who I'd be speaking to, the demographer, to look at and see how that could be done. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Vice Mayor? All right. Okay. Right, receiving the file, next item.
I'll take us on to Section 10, Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is Consider Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Three Separate Memorandums of Understanding Between the City and the Kasumno's Community Services District for Development of Park and Recreation Facilities, for Landscape Trails and Park Maintenance, and for Special Events.
Good evening. I will be presenting this item, but in fact, there's three separate MOUs and involve the work of a lot of staff from the city as well as the CSD, so I want to just briefly recognize all the staff members involved in that. Kara Reddick, Kristin Nelson, who've been involved with the special events agreement, Sean Gallier, and Bob Murdock on our landscaping agreement, and myself, and Christopher Jordan, and Darren Wilson, and John Hobbs, and Jennifer Alves, and others involved with the park development MOU. Also wanted to recognize Josh Green for his work and his staff that have worked very collaboratively with city staff on bringing these updated MOUs to the city council and the district board. He'll be taking these three MOUs to his board on October 2nd, I believe.
So Josh who?
So I also wanted to recognize that these, you know, we've been working on these for probably the last year or so, and this is really an effort. One is, one of the agreements expired, one of them is a new one, and so it's time to reexamine how we cooperate and collaborate with each other. And I'll say that, you know, the relationship that we have with the CSD is really exemplary. There aren't a whole lot of cities and park districts, park fire districts, that have the type of working relationship that we have, that we collaborate on a lot and a host of different projects. I think a great example is the partnership we've had on the Aquatic Center, with the city kind of owning and operating that, and, or owning that and designing and constructing that, and the CSD now operating it on behalf of the city. And you'll see through these MOUs, and we'll go into all the detail, what we've done before and what we've, I think, strengthened through these updated MOUs is just, you know, better ways of working together and are, in order to, I think, preserve and making sure we're not duplicating effort, making sure we're looking after taxpayer dollars and doing, and working together in the best way possible. So I'm going to just briefly run through some updates or highlights on the three different MOUs. The first is the big one, this is the Development of the Park Facilities MOU that started back in, actually, that date is wrong, it's August 15, 2007, MOU Settlement Agreement Regarding Ownership, Planning, and Construction of Parks in Elk Grove. That was replaced by a new MOU in 2015. That MOU expired back in April of this year, which we've been working on bringing this forward now. So the new MOU basically takes the same framework that we had previously developed that provides for the city to collect the funds. This is mostly in the newer developed areas, so Laguna Ridge, SEPA, et cetera. We then cooperate and collaborate with CSD on the design of the new facilities, and the CSD does the design and construction, ultimately owns and operates those new park facilities. So this new MOU provides some streamlining, some further opportunities for collaboration, and just better, you know, avoids, again, the duplication of services, provides the best, most efficient use of taxpayer dollars. So just a few key changes. We took away the expiration date, so it'll just go until the agreement may be terminated by either party with a written notice. There is provision to automatically apply the agreement to future with written notice. There is provision to automatically apply the agreement to future annexation areas, so we don't have to continue to update that. This is the framework for how we're going to do both fund, construct, and operate and own parks in the city going forward. There's an improved, better process for communication between our staffs on future planning, taking a look at five-year revenue forecasts and expenditures, and how we go about doing that. And there's also a new process for naming parks. We're working on developing that. The MOU doesn't specify how that's to be done, other than the city in collaboration with the CSD. We'll do that most likely, work through the city and district two by two to develop a system that's going to work for both parties. The second MOU is the Landscape Trails and Park Maintenance. This replaces two older existing MOUs. One was done in 2010, the other one was 2011. We've kind of consolidated those, both dealing with landscape corridors as well as our trail system. So the new MOU accounts for all the growth. The new parks we're building, the CSD is building a lot of parks in Laguna Ridge and ultimately in SEPA and beyond. The existing agreement has a cap on the administrative fees, and basically the fees are the money that the city through its collection of fees pays to the district, that the district is not able to continue to provide services under the current mechanism. So this provides a fair mechanism to pay them for the services rendered and delivering those parks. It's an annual process. We reviewed looking at the budget and seeing how those funds can be dispersed between the city to the CSD. And the final MOU is a new one regarding special events. City and the CSD both produce great special events, capitalizing on the expertise, knowledge, experience of both agencies. A new MOU provides mutual support of city and CSD events and activities and the joint use of facilities. So we share in the cost, we share in the recognition, we collaborate together on sponsoring and putting those events on in multiple ways. We think it's worked well. The old system was kind of cumbersome because we had to get separate agreements for each time we had an activity or event. This one, it's all covered on this new umbrella that has been developed under this MOU. So we think it'll be more efficient, better use of staff time. So staff's recommendation is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute three separate MOUs between the city and the Kasuma's Community Services District related to development of park and recreation facilities, landscape trails, and park maintenance, and special events. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Jason, I want to thank you and your staff, and Josh, and all of his staff for all the hard work went into putting together these MOUs. And I'm glad to hear you praise the relationship between the city and the CSD. I'm up here in part because things weren't always that way. And so we've come a long way to where the agencies have such mutual respect. Given that, then I want to, there's one question I have, and it was the, you touched upon it in your slide, but with respect to the landscape trails and park maintenance, we're going from a flat administrative fee to the district billing the city for actual costs incurred. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
And that is for median or landscape maintenance as well as trails? And then is there park maintenance included in that? And why I ask that is because if we are deeding over the parks to the CSD, then doesn't that become their responsibility to maintain?
Yeah. I'm gonna have Sean Gallagher come forward, I think he's back there somewhere. He's the one that was really developing this MOU with the CSD staff, so I'll have him answer that question.
Thank you.
So yes, the MOU does pay for the park maintenance. We collect through the CFD Laguna Ridge currently, right now, we collect all those funds. So then we pass that through to them to fund the park operations.
Okay, so then are we funding, are we paying them what we collect, or are we paying them what they bill us?
What they bill us.
So isn't there a possibility that those two numbers would be dramatically different?
They fund multiple things, like within Laguna Ridge, there's city-owned parcel landscape areas, medians, those kind of trails. Those are all paid through that same CFD. So we kind of separate that out, and they bill us for their actual costs related to park maintenance, park operation. And then they also bill us for the landscape maintenance of all the city facilities that we own within those areas.
So I guess, again, then I'm, we're deeding over the parks to the CSD, but we collect via the CFDs or the Melrose, the monies to maintain those parks.
Right. There's no, like, landscaping district, like in other areas of town where there's an L and L.
You just are hitting upon where my next questioning is, is I know the CSD has had a couple of LL and Ds, landscape and lighting districts, that have been insufficient to cover park maintenance costs. And so they've had to either reduce the level of quality of those parks and/or go back to the voters and say, would you impose a higher tax upon yourself? And so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I don't want to see us in a situation where we're quote-unquote subsidizing above and beyond the CFDs collected in order to pay for the park maintenance.
In the areas where we're funding park maintenance, we don't feel that's an issue right now, or in the future. Both CFDs are gonna collect a good funding amount that'll keep parks maintained at a high level, as well as all the city-owned landscaping within those areas.
And I appreciate that, yeah.
I just, I think you bring up a good point in that, you know, it's our responsibility to look at the revenues from the CFD and look at what CSD is asking us for and compare those two numbers. One of the things that we're doing as part of this, too, is we're talking, we're looking out five years and trying to understand what the capital replacement needs and everything, and try to really get an entire look at the budget, and with the expectation, CSD, what do you need to make the parks look great? Because we want them to look great. So what's it gonna cost? And then do as we do with our own budget, which is okay. How much do you need and why do you need that? And come do some agreement every year as to what the budget is, knowing what the revenue stream is, knowing that we're all confined and within the constraints of that revenue stream. So it's a budget exercise like we do ourselves, whether it's Measure A or some other funding source, trying to figure out how to get the most with the funding that's available. So it's our job to kind of watch over the revenues. And then CSD, we worked together to kind of line out the plan over the next number of years to say, what do you need, in order to make this look really good.
And that's really the, yeah, go ahead.
Can you just add something? I think I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I want to make the distinction between some of the older landscape and lighting districts that the CSD is maintaining versus the new Laguna Ridge CFD. They're really drastically different in the way they're funded. So the old landscape and lighting districts, a lot of them don't have annual escalations. They were put in place years ago, so they haven't increased over that time. We have annual escalations of the CFD. And right now, we're only charging, I think it's 70 or 75 percent, 70, 70 percent of the maximum CFD amount. So we wouldn't have to go back to the voters to increase that amount. You've already established a much higher amount. We just, every year it goes up by 2 percent. Is it 2 percent? Or is it based on the CPI? It's based on the CPI. But if we got into a situation where the costs were higher than the annual revenue coming in, council has the ability to increase that amount up to the maximum 100 percent. So right now, there's plenty of money in the fund to maintain those parks at a very high level. We're gonna continue to add parks, so that's gonna take, you know, resources and revenues to do that. But we feel good, based on what we know right now about our ability in the future, really in the future of the city, to be able to maintain all the parks and facilities in Laguna Ridge, and then ultimately in SEPA. We've established those programs to allow us to do that without having to go back and ask for the residents out there for more money. The other thing that I would say that's a little bit unique here is there are facilities in Laguna Ridge that are owned and operated by the city, and there are also parks that are owned and operated by the CSD. So the Civic Center, which is now District 56, for example, those are facilities owned by the city that we collect all that money. We give a portion of it to the CSD for the parks that they want to maintain. We retain portions of it to maintain the District 56 properties and other facilities that we own. So that's, makes that CFD a little bit unique as well.
Well, and I'm not suggesting anything untoward by either agency, but I think, Mr. Murdock, you touched on exactly what I was driving at, is that it is a budgetary exercise to look at the cost and the revenue. And for whatever reason that the costs are being driven up, whether it is simply, you know, the cost of doing business, or if it is expectations that are driving that, and the fact that we do have certain other commitments within that CFD that we need to fund, just to make sure that we are keeping pace. Because obviously, having the ability to go to 100 percent maybe doesn't match up with the drive to want to go to 100 percent, right? And so the more that we can keep the homeowner's costs down and still provide the quality of park that they want to see. I just want to make sure that we're not just blindly writing Josh a check and, you know, he goes off and funds the Josh Corvette Fund, you know, and, no, I'm just teasing. But in all seriousness, that's what I was trying to drive at, is exactly what you, and so then is that number calculated, forecasted, or?
So the budget, CSD submits a budget annually to us, prior to us submitting our budget for council approval. So we see that and we budget for that. So it's, and we look at that versus the revenues and all the other costs that are associated with that area. And so we budget for it every year. And then we provide that money to them and they stay within budget as they operate.
That's what I, that's what I.
We don't blindly take the number. I mean, we look at it and try to understand if there are increases, why. And there could be legitimate reasons. I mean, CSD's got great staff in there and having great facilities. And so if there needs to be some capital replacements over the next five years, great, let's look at them.
Great. But it's forecasted for the next year, not here's your bill for what we provided last year?
They do invoice us throughout the year, but it's already been forecasted.
Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I think I just heard it, but I just want to, I want you to say it again. So you do sit down with CSD and basically audit their budgets and make sure that they're appropriate and what you think is gonna be needed? Do you have a say?
Yes. Yes, we don't, we don't, I mean, we have a great relationship with the CSD and the staffs work together. And so, but they understand they're gonna submit a budget and we're gonna ask questions, just like anything else.
Yeah.
And if there's an increase, we're gonna ask why. Because I know I'm gonna have to justify it to Jason, who ultimately we all have to justify it to all of you. So we need to understand what's in the number and what the justification is for it. It's because we need to be able to provide that explanation.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
And also, just so council knows, we look at this at the front end as well. So when a new development's coming in in Laguna Ridge, what we do, we sit down with finance, with operation and maintenance, with development services, and they're put in a particular zone based on what we think their maintenance is going to be, based on the amenities that that particular development has. So we think about this both on the very front end before any development is done. And then also, we do a check on the back end as the work's being done to make sure that we did that correctly.
Jason, thanks for the clarification. I was gonna bring that up. I've had some pretty extensive conversations with Josh relative to, I think the area that Councilman Hume's referring to is pretty much always, is all on the east side. So it's all in the older areas that had a fixed lighting and landscape that did not have the provision. And Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 218 vote that has to go out, and I think it has to take, what, 60 percent or 50 percent plus one, 50 percent plus one. And a lot of the older neighborhoods choose not to increase their taxes for those. So the only alternative, it's basically, we're gonna provide you a level of service for the amount of money you're gonna pay. But again, the CFDs in Melrose on the west side of town has the different provisions. So I think you explained it very well to make it clear to everybody. Because I think it's very important for everybody to understand. And then there's also with that, there's a capital side and a maintenance side, if I'm not mistaken. And those are held separately as well. So I think this is a great, great opportunity for us. I know that several years ago, when we moved into having CSD do all the city's landscaping, it's made a huge difference. Because I recall when we used to, I think, the medians that we had responsible for, we'd have a crew going down, let's say Laguna, doing the median, and then CSD would have a crew out there doing the landscape on the side of the street. So I mean, it was kind of ridiculous. And I think we've been able to save quite a bit of money by having it all under one umbrella. So no, I think these type of things are great, great memorandums of understanding to put together. I really appreciate that. You know, the time you spent, sounds like you spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah, no, us and CSD work really well together to get these executed.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you. At this point in time, I want to open for public comment. Seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, close public comment. Members, motion?
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post-attention. Next item.
I'll take us on to item 10.2, which is receive a presentation on the status of private development activity within the city of Elk Grove.
My presentation will not mention Josh Green's name.
He just did.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As you recall from our last meeting, our city manager went over some city priority projects, a showcase of that. Tonight, what I'd like to do with my staff is go briefly through showcasing some private development projects throughout town. And it's a two-part presentation. Antonio Ablog, our planning manager, is gonna go through an exciting new GIS-based tool that we're gonna go public in the near future, that's basically story maps. And it'll be able to show development applications approved as well as under construction. So if a member of the public wants to say, what's that grading going on, they can go to that map and hit it, that GIS layer, it'll pop up in information with pictures and a description. So Antonio will give that demonstration. And then, secondly, Shane Diller, our Assistant Development Service Director, will come up and go over some statistics over the years on planning applications as well as building permits. So just a brief summary of the Development Services Department. And we formed this in 2016. As most of you know, I was up in Public Works running drainage and development. And when Tara left, I was asked to become the interim planning manager, ultimately the Development Services Director. I took development engineering down with me, and we formed a kind of a one-stop shop. And with that, this is kind of the structure of it. We, under the Development Services Department, we obviously have planning, engineering, and building, but we also have housing and code enforcement. So these are the funding sources. Housing's not in here, but that's the Affordable Housing Fund. The General Fund subsidizes the code enforcement as well as some special projects. Our Enterprise Fund, our 295 Fund, is basically supports building and development engineering current planning. I'd also like to thank Loan Braswell and our GIS department for working with us on this new tool. So without further ado, I'll invite Antonio up.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of city council. Antonio Ablog, planning manager, here to present our new tool that we will roll out to the public fairly soon. Right now, our current website does have a kind of public portal to view the projects that we have in progress and approved and going on. It's kind of cumbersome, both for the public to view and find information on and to update. The map shows parcels where activity is going on. And below, it has a table with multiple projects that are, has statuses that say, planning approved, in review, or in construction. But you kind of have to know what you're looking for to find the information you need in there. So we've worked with our GIS team to really look at a tool that will work for the residents of Elk Grove. Like Darren said, if somebody passes by a site and sees construction going on, what's going on there? Sometimes they'll call our public counter. But we want a quick web-accessible way for them to find that information and see what's going on on the map and see a graphic depiction of what's going on there. And as Darren also mentioned, we want to thank Loan Braswell, who's kind of the technical expertise behind this tool. We're planners and engineers, but we're not web specialists who know how to put this information together. So you see the old version and map with information. And our new tool that will roll out to the public, it's an interactive web-based GIS map, will be very familiar for people to navigate, people who are used to Google Maps, things like that. And it's very visual. And as a planner, you know, we're very visual. And we think this will be a really cool tool for our residents to use.
Can I pause you for a quick second there, Antonio?
Yep.
So right there at the bottom point of Elk Grove Regional Park, the Fight property, we have a planning department sign on that property.
Yes.
Is that just not plugged into this map yet, or would this map not pick that up because it's too early in the process?
So that's kind of our next phase right now. Since we do have so much construction activity going on, we focused on those sites that are either inactive construction activity going on, we focused on those sites that are, uh, either inactive construction or recently constructed, our next phase will be to provide, uh, those projects that are planning in progress, uh, which are going through the review phase, that will be the next phase to, um, add another layer to this map, um, in the upper, upper left, you'll see this blue flag.
Ah.
In plan review, so that will be the next phase to, to add a layer, another layer to this.
Good, because I think that, you know, obviously seeing those signs gives people questions, and then maybe if we could have the website address on that sign, so they can, just saves, you know, they might want, want to pick up the phone and call, but they'll certainly go home and check out the map and go, oh, okay.
As you see, as I navigate through this map, um, even us in Development Services, we're, we're surprised how many projects are, are going up and, um, what we're keeping track of at this time, um, so, uh, just give you an overview of how this works, um, you could scroll through the map, uh, you could zoom in to specific sites, uh, you could click on the flag, and up will pop, uh, an image, well, we'll try to keep these images updated quarterly, um, we're still working through the kinks on that, um, as we roll this out, uh, you'll have a graphic representation of the project, um, and you'll see, as I go through the presentation, you'll see a few of these aerial drone shots, want to thank our public information team and Crystal Lumery for taking the drone out and taking these shots for us, um, and we could go back, and you can see there's a, a pop-up that shows a, a description of the project, uh, so people can see the graphic and see a description of the project, so they know what's going on. So first, I'm going to go through some of our, our commercial projects that are, um, in the construction phase or recently completed, um, I'll focus, I'll start with one of our bigger commercial developments, and it just so happens that I believe a year ago today, Costco had their, um, opening celebration, so I'll start with the ridge. So the ridge, uh, they've recently, um, completed their, their, received their first certificative occupancy, that's for Stanton Optical, um, and upcoming, um, fairly soon, we'll, we'll have, um, Olive Garden, uh, they're under construction, uh, they're proposed to open, uh, approximately January of 2020, uh, we also have been informed that, um, contracts have been finalized for biology, uh, sourdough and company, Somi Somi Ice Cream, uh, Great Clips, and Happiness Nails, um, and in current process, uh, as far as staff review, uh, we have Buffalo Wild Wings, and also Aspen Dental has, uh, received approvals for another pad in the ridge, uh, ultimately, the, the pad portion of the ridge will build out to approximately 240,000 square feet, uh, and that's, um, in addition to the, uh, existing Costco, which I believe is about 200,000 square feet. You can see the, um, Olive Garden Restaurant, uh, that received approval about two months ago, they're already un, under construction and going vertical with that. One of our other big commercial sites is, um, the Auto Mall, uh, we do have recent construction activity going on there, um, and as always, uh, with auto services, um, due to the nature of the business, they're always looking to, to refresh and rebrand, um, and keep, um, up with the times so that they can, um, sell their vehicles. Enterprise Car Sales was, was recently opened, uh, earlier this year. And the Toyota Service Center just recently opened, um, uh, their service building, um, south of their dealership, uh, the most recent addition or, uh, uh, reface of the dealerships at, uh, the Auto Mall is the Mazda Building, uh, we think, uh, this building turned out pretty cool, uh, looks, looks really, uh, good at night, um, and I believe, um, that they'll be, uh, having a grand open, grand reopening for that fairly soon, so that's the new Mazda dealership. Council recalls, a, a few meetings ago, we did, uh, bring the Calvine Point Project, uh, they're building out the, uh, some final phases for the Calvine Point Retail Center, uh, that project has already begun construction, they've been grading for, uh, a pad, uh, that will be a future, um, sports facility, uh, in, in addition to that gym, they also have about 80,000 square feet of, uh, additional, uh, retail and restaurant space that will be built out at that Calvine Point Center. But in Development Services, not only do we facilitate, uh, new development, we also look to, um, reimagine some of these, these older shopping centers, uh, we have the shopping center at, um, Highway 99 at Elk Grove Boulevard, uh, where recently Arby's and Max Barbecue has, um, opened for business, uh, we have Arby's, which is a national chain, but we also have Max Barbecue, which is, uh, a local business, um, and I believe both of those have been very successful. Moving on to residential projects, um, as you know, we've got, uh, a lot of residential development, especially single-family development going on in our new growth area, uh, from Laguna Ridge, uh, to the SEPA area, um, we have Tim Lewis constructing the, uh, building at the Madera South, Poppy Lane Project, uh, Taylor Morrison, uh, completing their Madera East subdivision. Down in Sterling Meadows, we have a number of builders, uh, three or four builders building out the Sterling Meadows subdivision, um, since they started building last year, that they've, um, been building homes, uh, at a fairly quick, quick pace, they've even, uh, graded their site all the way down to, to Camera Road, including the, the property, uh, that the city now owns. And in SEPA, we do have our, our first development project, that's the Bruceville Meadows Project, uh, Taylor Morrison has, has begun construction on that, in the photo, you can see the grading activity, uh, for that, um, kind of in the center, you see the Shetsey Channel coming towards Bruceville Road, you've got Camera Road to the south, um, and you see, you can see the streets being cut in for that future, uh, residential development, I believe it's, um, a little over 300 lots, uh, with about 200 of those being estate-sized lots. And our residential subdivisions aren't only confined to kind of that new growth area, over on, uh, the east side, we do have two larger subdivisions, um, underway at this time, but we have the, uh, Milestone Subdivision, that's also a Taylor Morrison subdivision, and we have Fieldstone North and South, North and South, which is being built out by Lennar. Some of the bigger projects going on around town are the senior development projects, we've got three of those, uh, large facilities, um, going up around town, uh, the one that's furthest along is the, um, Landing at Elk Grove, which is at Sheldon, just south of Sheldon and East Stockton Boulevard. That includes some, uh, it includes a large multi-story building as well as some, um, independent cottages. We also have, uh, the Park Senior Housing, similar product type, uh, that will be a large multi-story building with some cottages abutting the existing single-family residences, and we have Bruceville Point, uh, behind the Kohl Shopping Center, uh, that will also be, uh, similar, they'll have a large multi-story component, uh, at this time, they're not proposing the single-family cottages, um, we may see that sometime in the future, um, and if, uh, we're, um, updating this with the in-progress, that would be something that would pop up in the in-progress, um, projects. We do have some multifamily projects that are, have either recently been completed or are under construction, uh, the Bow Street Apartments have just begun, um, leasing out to tenants, this one is an affordable housing project, uh, just north of Sheldon Road and Highway Night, and east of Highway 99, and down in Laguna Ridge, we have, um, uh, the Mesa Apartments, which is a market rate apartment project. Again, as I mentioned, moving forward, uh, we'll look to, to keep this, uh, update and refreshed pro, approximately every quarter for the construction activities, and we will add those in, in plan review, in progress, um, planning applications, um, so that residents are apprised of not only what's being constructed, but what's going through the review process. Again, this is kind of, we'll provide a, a public portal, um, and showcase the activities that we do as a Development Services Team, um, I mentioned Loan Braswell is kind of the technical expertise behind this, but I also wanted to thank Hannah Shi, one of our Development Services Civic Summer interns, who, uh, helped put the information together and photos together for this project. From there, I'll hand it off to Shane Diller.
So while, while Shane's coming up, as Antonio mentioned, this, this is very dynamic, so, um, every quarter, we're going to be updated, what I'd like to do before it goes public is kind of come up with some procedures on who's doing what, as far as pictures, updates, um, you know, tracking approvals to construction, because once it goes to planning, it goes to engineering, so, that, that takes some, uh, you know, coordination, and, you know, we want to be able to assign that to staff before we roll this out to the public.
Well, and when you, the completed on there, how long does it stay on?
We're, we're thinking about six months, it's probably a good timeframe to just keep it on, and then we'll take it off.
Okay, thanks.
Evening, members of the council, it's a busy time in Development Services, uh, as you can see from some of the charts, I'm going to quickly move through, uh, the activity of permitting, both in planning and building, are, uh, are, uh, keeping, uh, pace with the economy we're seeing, uh, you can see here that we came out of the recession pretty well, and into 2018, which was a, a banner year in planning project applications, not one that we saw since, uh, before the recession, and the, uh, number we have here for 2019 is calendar year so far, so we're on pace, uh, to exceed most of what we've done in previous years so far, just this year, and we'll probably come in, uh, about where we landed in 2018, as far as, uh, new entitlement projects coming through planning, uh, construction activity is also, uh, booming right now, you can see that our 2019 fiscal year number ended, uh, at above 800 new single-family homes, and, uh, that's, uh, we saw some months of permit activity there that, uh, we had not seen since prior to the recession, so the housing market is, uh, is, uh, robust right now in the city of Elk Grove, and we're seeing lots of permits, uh, come through, uh, related to single-family homes, there's also a lot of general construction and commercial activity, as Antonio was just explaining, uh, that comes through there, uh, it's important to note that total overall, we saw 50, over 5,600 building permits issued in, uh, the, in fiscal year 2019, and that our commercial project turnaround time on plan review was nine days or less, so, uh, business days, so less than two weeks on our plan review turnaround time on average for projects, so though the activity is, uh, is fast-paced right now, uh, we're keeping up with it pretty well and making sure that we try to hold ourselves out as a standard in regards to customer service in, uh, in the permitting and processing areas, uh, you can see from construction valuation, these are in the millions, uh, and, uh, from 2007, where we, uh, left the real housing boom into the recession years, you can see that we've got a really good steady climb out of the recession, in the last, uh, two fiscal years, 18 and 19, uh, we have seen up above $300 million in construction valuation in the city of Elk Grove, uh, we don't ever think we will see, and, you know, I, I don't know that we would be able to handle the, uh, uh, the numbers we saw in the housing boom of '04, '05, where we topped $1 billion one year in housing construction, but, uh, these are certainly very healthy numbers and would rival anything else that we're seeing in the region. With that, uh, all three of us are available for questions.
Any questions? Councilman?
Actually, ju- just a comment, I, I think this is a fantastic idea, and it looks great, appreciate all your hard work on this, thank you.
Ditto.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, I, th- thanks for that snapshot of showing year over year, but really, the, the new interactive GIS map, uh, I think is pretty fantastic, and I think it's a valuable tool for everybody to be able to use.
Okay.
Yeah, not to go on any further, but awesome product, keep up the good work, thank you.
Okay, excellent, you know, I get so many questions asking me, what's going on here, what's going on there, so this helps, yeah, so, thank you much, do we open for public comment yet, no? Okay, let's open and close, because there are no members of the public signed up to speak, and, um, receiving file, thank you, next item.
I'll take us on to item 10.3, which is to receive information, consider adopting a resolution that establishes a flag policy for the city of Elk Grove.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, I'm Douglas Scott, your Facilities Fleet Manager, and I'm here to present item 10.3, a flag policy for the city. The purpose and the scope of the flag policy is to establish city guidelines for the exhibition and display of flags for city-owned property within the city limits of the city of Elk Grove. Some of the definitions of the policy are, um, a flag is defined in the Elk Grove Municipal Code, uh, section 23, 100.020F, did I get that right? Good, thanks, flags shall not be considered banners, and banners shall not be considered flags, uh, military flags is defined as the official flag of each of the five branches of the US military, also included under this definition is the President of War, Missing in Action POW MIA flag, a street flag is defined as a flag flown in a flagpole mount generally attached to s- city streetlight poles, um, these are the poles that are on Elk Grove Floren Road that run, uh, north from Elk Grove Park, uh, to Elk Grove Boulevard, and on Elk Grove Boulevard that run west to Highway 99. City-owned property is defined as all city-owned or operated buildings, facilities, or with a flag holder in place that display flags, flagpoles is defined as all flagpoles and/or flag holders on city-owned, sorry, I repeat myself there, um, and then half-staff is defined as a style of flag display. The only flag that may be flown on city-owned property in each flagholder is the national flag of the United States of America. Flags that may be flown at each city, uh, owned property or on a flagpole is the official flags of the state of California and the official flag of the city of Elk Grove. The official flags of the five military branches and POW MIA flags that will be flown at the Veterans Grove, uh, at District 56, in addition to the national and California flags, are, um, and they will be in the, flown in the order of establishment, uh, the military branches, the United States Army, the United States Marine Corps, the United States Navy, the United States, um, Air Force, the United States Coast Guard, and, of course, the POW MIA flag. The city will use all-weather flags for displaying, uh, 24 hours a day, flags must be properly illuminated during the hours of darkness, the US flag code does not indicate what properly illuminated means, however, according to the American Legion's interpretation of properly illuminated, it is a light source sufficient to illuminate a flag so it is recognizable by the casual observer, for this purpose, the city finds that streetlight provides a slight source for proper illumination of a flag fixed to a streetlight pole. Half-staffing of flags, all flags displayed on city-owned property pursuant to the flag policy will be flown at half-staff on the following occasions, by order of proclamation by the President of the United States, Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is on May 15th, Memorial Day, which is the last Monday of the month of May, from sunrise to noon, Patriot Day, which is on September 11th, and Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day on September 7th. The city manager may also fly the city flag, which is in front of City Hall, at half-staff at his or her direction, discretion, uh, examples are the death of a prominent federal or state, uh, governmental, um, official, the death of a prominent resident or other prominent person in the community, or a significant community event. Staff recommends that the city of Elk Grove Council adopt the flag policy, um, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? No questions? No question, okay, this time, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment, members, the direction and direction.
Doug, I just want to thank you for putting together such a solid code and very straightforward and clear, and I know I spoke with Larry Sahoda, the American Legion, he was very appreciative of your efforts as well, so, I would like to move the item.
Got a motion second, and Doug, I want to say I double-checked, because I couldn't believe that Larry would agree, but, uh, he was very, um, impressed with what you did, so, thank you, all right, uh, you got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post extension, all right, next item.
I'll take us to item 10.4, which is receive an update on preparation of the 2021, 2029 regional housing needs allocation and the 2021 housing element.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Christopher Jordan, uh, joining me this evening on this item will be Sarah Bondrigger from our staff, we also have with us Greg Chu from the Sacramento area. We also have with us Greg Chu from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, who is leading the charge on preparation of the Sacramento Region Regional Housing Needs Allocation. We want to bring this item back to you. Originally, you saw a presentation overview of RENA and the housing element process back at the retreat in February. There's been some recent developments on it relative to preparation and of public availability for review of the draft RENA, so we figured this would be a good opportunity to review where we are and what some of the coming attractions are. So we'll run through some background, the development process and what SACOG has prepared, and then overview of the housing element process and schedule-wise. So what is the regional housing needs allocation? It's a state-required process, and you're going to hear us talk about state mandates throughout this presentation. The goal here is to get jurisdictions to plan for enough housing to accommodate all economic segments. This could be a number of different ways, but you'll see the income categories listed here are what the state goes off of. These are based on the area median income. The intent here is that there are a variety of folks in various socioeconomic conditions that need to be accommodated within the community, and the regional housing needs allocation and the housing element process are meant to identify sites for development of that type of housing. So there's three steps here. First is the regional determination, then the preparation of the RENA methodology, and then the housing element update itself. So these three layers each correspond to a different role at different levels. So the regional is at the state level, the methodology is at the regional level, and then the housing element is at the local level. For the housing element, many of you are aware, the housing element is a component of the general plan. It is the only state-mandated section which has a calendar update requirement of every eight years for our particular jurisdiction. So this next eight-year cycle will begin in 2021 and conclude in 2029. Overall, the state has a series of goals related to the housing element update where we look at the housing needs of every one in the community, identify policies to encouraging housing production, and then ultimately getting down to land that's zoned for development of housing at various densities to support those housing types. Question often comes up, does the city have to build housing? No, we don't. We've talked about this at the retreat a little bit, but the intent here is that enough land is zoned for housing production that the market can respond with the production, so that land is available and it's development-ready in order to facilitate that to occur. We are required to have a housing element that is in compliance with state requirements, with the regional housing needs allocation. The housing element has a state certification requirement. If we don't have a certified element, we're subject to loss of potential grant funds or other funding opportunities that may come through state or federal sources. We also have some potential liability hanging out there, and you may have heard earlier this year, the state looking at litigation over a number of jurisdictions for housing element compliance issues. State law is rapidly changing on this topic. There were a number of bills just this last legislative session, and we're expecting more in the next calendar year, a number that are being held over for two-year packages. So we're staff is tracking these and looking at opportunities to include and address those as required. Last piece I'll talk about, then hand it over to Sarah, is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, or the MTPSCS. This is a region-wide transportation strategy, and as SACOG is preparing it, that will look at economic prosperity across the region and ties in with land use and transportation for those objectives. This is another state and federal requirement. This gets updated every four years, so the previous one in 2016, now we're at 2020. And this four-year cycle with every other one ties into the regional housing needs allocation and that plan. So when SACOG prepares the MTPSCS, they do a series of growth projections. In this case, it'll look to the time period from 2020 to 2040. The draft document is now out on the street for review. Staff has been tracking the process the last several years and is now doing a bigger review of what's available. But regionally, over this 20-year period, SACOG is projecting a regional increase of about 620,000 people, of which Elk Grove is 5.41%. And that percentage number is key and will come into the RENA process. So again, that public review is occurring, and as we understand from SACOG staff, they're anticipating adoption at the board's February meeting next year. So with that, I'll hand it over to Sarah, who's going to go through the RENA process.
Hey. So the, the RENA process is managed by SACOG. It starts with, as Christopher said, the MTPSCS and the 20-year forecast. And that is used by SACOG and the Department of Housing and Community Development to come up with the regional determination, which is a number that the entire region gets in the four different income categories. We are aware, you know, our number is higher in the region this round than it was last round. We know SACOG did a lot of work with HCD to help them understand our, our jurisdiction's realities and to get that number to be as reasonable as possible, although it still does seem very high. They have set that regional determination, so there is no going back on that now. They've issued it. There's no further arguing that. So the step that we're at at this point is SACOG takes that regional determination and has to make a regional allocation, which is where they split it between all of the jurisdictions in the SACOG region. There's a lot of coordination that goes into that. Christopher and I have both attended numerous meetings to talk about methodology options, and that, that feedback led to four draft methodologies that they've released for public comment now. Ultimately, the SACOG board will need to adopt one of those methodologies, and that goes into their RENA plan. Once we have that, we'll know with certainty what our jurisdiction needs to plan for in the next housing element round. But at this point, we have a good ballpark between the four methodologies. So once, once we have our RENA, actually probably before we even have it, we'll be starting work on identifying some sites. We'll ultimately do our housing policies update, and the goal is to adopt a housing element by August of 2021, which seems far away, but will not be when we talk about the steps later. So the state's determination overall for our region was 153,000 units roughly. From that, a little bit is subtracted out for the Tahoe Basin. There's some complicated reasons they do that, but ultimately, we're still looking at about 153,000 units in our SACOG planning area. Of those, we have about 25% of them in the very low-income category, 15% low, 17% moderate, and 41% above moderate. The extremely low-income category is kind of considered part of the very low-income category. So when they're doing their methodology, there are five factors that SACOG needs to consider: increasing housing supply and mix of housing types, promoting infill equity and environment, the jobs-housing-fit balance, regional income parity, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. And of those, two of them are largely addressed through the MTPSCS. So we don't spend a lot of time considering how, how that will work. We spend most of our time talking about the remaining three factors. So the, the two factors that are part of the MTP are sort of weighted into this equal-share allocation, which is what, what each jurisdiction would get if we were all just taking the same percentage of each of the income categories. And so this number, this 8,263 number that you see here, that is the total number of units that Elk Grove will have to plan for. That will not change. That is 5.41% of the regional determination. And so what shifts with the SACOG methodology is how that number is split between the different income categories. And so you'll see how, how that, that plays out in the different scenarios. So the three factors that, that we are going to spend some time talking about, the jobs-housing-fit, regional income parity, and affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a new factor this year. For the jobs-housing-fit, the goal, the objective of that factor is to look at how we can house more low-wage workers near where they're working. And they look at how much affordable housing we have compared to how many low-wage workers we have. The regional average is a little under two low-wage workers for every one affordable unit. Elk Grove currently has four low-wage jobs for every one affordable unit. So that would indicate this is a factor that's going to increase our percentage of low-income housing needed. We also look at a regional income parity factor, the goal of which is to move all jurisdictions to having an equal percentage of the region's low-income housing over time. The long-term target for 2035 is 42.5%. In this graphic here, we show the trend line where we need to be in 2029, which is at the end of our housing element period that we're planning for. Currently, we have about 30% of our housing in this affordable target, and the trend line would have us at 37%. And then the final factor is affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that is looking at how we can ensure that people have the opportunity to live in high-opportunity areas. And a high-opportunity area for this purpose means an area that has relatively low poverty and unemployment, and relatively high education levels, home values, and environmental quality levels. So there is a good bit of overlap between being a high-income area and being a high-opportunity area. The regional average is 37% for a high-opportunity area, and we are at 72%. So clearly, we are doing much better than the region overall at offering high-opportunity levels to our residents, which is great, but it also leaves us with a big gap to fill. So all three of these factors are factors that would increase our share of low-income housing allocated in the housing element process. So what is done is that each factor is applied individually to the equal-share allocation, and so jurisdictions will see increases or decreases. All three of the factors for us indicate an increase. However, in recognition of the fact that some of these factors would have an outsized impact on jurisdictions, SACOG recommends weighting or capping the amount of the adjustment so that it's not overly burdensome. And their four alternatives have slightly different methods for how they account for that and how they cap that. So the four, the four methods adjust for the three factors at either a high or a moderate level. So in methodology A, they give each of the factors a high emphasis, and you can see that, that those are capped at 15% in the high-emphasis model. In their, second methodology B, each of the, each of the factors is capped at the moderate impact level, so at a 10% level. In the methodology C, there, the regional income parity factor has a moderate impact, while the other two have a high impact. And jobs-housing-fit just has the jobs-housing-fit with the high impact. And so here you can see what that does for Elk Grove. So the, the high-emphasis model, alternative A, would leave us with about 4,400 units to plan for. Going down to the moderate-income alternative, or the moderate-emphasis alternative, would leave us with about 4,000 units. So there's, those are, those are the two with the biggest difference, so about 400 units different overall. And then alternative C and D are somewhere in between there. SACOG staff recommends alternative C, which as you can see would give the city 4,200, 4,300 units to plan for. They collected input from all of the jurisdictions. We did submit input to SACOG, and they, they accepted the argument somewhat that we made that there is a lot of overlap between some of these factors, particularly between the regional parity factor and the affirmatively furthering fair housing factor. Both of those are trying to increase low-income housing in effectively higher-income areas, because higher-opportunity areas are essentially the same as higher-income areas. And so our preference that we submitted to the SACOG staff was we preferred the moderate-emphasis option for all the factors, because we felt that that recognized that the, the factors are correlated, and a lot of them are adjusting for essentially the same thing, that we are a high-income community. That's especially so, as I mentioned, of the regional income and the fair housing factor. It's also true for the jobs-housing-fit, but to a lesser extent, we think. So we, we are preparing formal comments to submit to SACOG, and we are interested in feedback from the council on what you would, what you would like for us to submit. So we can take that now, or we can have Christopher give a little update on where we go from here, and then have our discussion.
Okay, Christopher?
All right, so we'll briefly, briefly on the next steps from the housing element side. Obviously, the programs and policies that are in the housing element will get reviewed. We have to go through the state certification process and review for what those policies will end up looking like. But the more intensive process is site identification. So with these units allocated to us, we have to identify sites that meet minimum density requirements in order to count towards those income levels. Assuming alternative C, staff's rough back-of-napkin calculation using an average density, we need somewhere between about 170 and 220 acres. Our current housing list has about 156 acres, so we're short there by a few, and need to work on bringing that number up. Additionally, we recommend identifying some, what we're calling buffer sites, essentially additional acreage above what that alternative, whatever that final number ends up being, because the way the state laws are changing, the trajectory that we're seeing the legislature go, is as you have projects that are non-affordable, while the city cannot prohibit those non-affordable or market-rate projects, or even say, some other use that's allowed by right in that zone to go in, well, you can't deny those projects from being approved on the basis of housing, of being an affordable project or not being. You need to be able to make up those units in a relatively short period of time, make up that acreage. So by having a buffer list, it allows us to be more responsive when those other types of applications come in. So we've talked about this before, but in terms, the way the state looks at it is density is the solution to the affordability piece. So the higher-density projects will address lower income. These are projects generally in the 25 to 30 unit per acre range. And higher-income units, so things that will fit the moderate, or the above-moderate-income category, would be in those lower-density categories. So again, we have to identify enough vacant land at the appropriate densities to accommodate. Something staff is looking at more of, and we've talked about this a little bit at the retreat, and we're doing some analysis on it now, is the moderate-income category. We'll need to, we're anticipating needing to do some work on those sites in this next round, where we haven't had two before. These fit in that in-between range, in between about 15 and 20 units an acre. So we'll need to be looking at sites for those, and that's sort of a concern for us. There are some opportunities we want to make sure to highlight. There has been a round of grant funding from the state that is on a formula basis. I believe it's about 310,000 that we're getting. We got a conditional award verbally from the state, excuse me, just this week. You saw this project list on your consent calendar back in July, but this funding will go towards the actual housing element update itself, because we do a lot of work in the SECO review for that to pre-clear sites for housing construction. We're also including that missing middle study, that middle-income density product of what are the barriers to developing that, what are issues the city could be looking at in order to address those. And then looking at objective design standards and financial feasibility analysis for a variety of residential projects, particularly those higher-income units. Some other things we're looking at, in fact, SACOG hosted a workshop on this last week, are looking at new product types and solutions that look more at project design and how project design can interface better with surrounding neighborhoods and existing areas to address particularly that middle-income category. So we're taking a look at that, and some of the funding from SB2 will go towards that. There's another grant round that I believe is about $500,000, which we're expecting the guidelines to come out from the state later this year in draft form, and applications to be submitted in the spring. Again, it's formulary-based, so there'll be other projects related to this that we'll be able to go towards. So schedule-wise, starting later this fall, we will begin at a staff level identifying what we call the universe of sites. Basically, we're going to kick over every rock and find any potential property that is vacant or unutilized in some way and consider it. Doesn't mean any decisions are being made, it's just the analysis step. We'll then do some public outreach on that early in 2020 in the first quarter, and hope to bring back a list for review for an initial culling of that list, getting down to, this would be the worst-case range of sites that could potentially be rezoned to meet the housing element. We'll then start SECO review process on that in the late spring with the goal of winter of '21 having the draft housing element, as well as the draft EIR available for public review. That'll take us into Planning Commission hearing in the spring of '21, and you're
in the spring of '21, and your consideration and adoption no later than August of 2021 to meet the requirements. So, that concludes our presentation. Available to answer questions.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, CJ, Christopher, for putting this together. Good to see you, Gregory. As for comments back to SACOG, I mean, I'm just going to repeat what Gregory knows I've said before. Zoning doesn't build housing. You know, we've been, we've been underbuilt for some time, and we will continue to be if we don't find a way to make it more economically viable, meaning the fee programs, meaning, you know, less risk in litigation, those kinds of things. And that's a conversation I think regionally we need to have and continue to have. The housing crisis is statewide, it's not just in the city of Elk Grove. These numbers are going up across the region, the SACOG region, and throughout the state, frankly. So, Elk Grove is not unique. So, I just want to remind everybody of that. Just because we zone it, doesn't mean it will get built, and we've got, over in my district, there's housing that's been zoned for affordability for 20 years, and it's still fallow. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Ditto what Councilmember Soon said, and I support staff's position on the ranking of the alternatives.
Excellent. So, let's open for public comments. Seeing no members of the public senate to speak, want to close public comment, and there are additional comments, deliberation? All right, I agree with staff's recommendation. All right, sounds good. Okay, let's adjourn this meeting at 9:31 PM. Thank you.